Helping to recover the conditions down on Charles Street that I was witness to. The conditions two days ago were nowhere near as nice as they were today. It was eight degrees when I was down walking. And it's hard work and there are people out in eight degree weather for eight hours. It takes a bit out of you. I understand there are continued problems in the area and I believe we'll hear tonight from residents in terms of some of those, but I did want to make a point of commenting about the effort made by both National Grid and our Public Safety Department, Public Works. With that, I'll turn to my right tonight and open, ask for liaison reports. John?
Not necessarily liaison report, but the Office of Elder Affairs has lost a longtime resident, Ann Gentile is retired.
Yes.
And visited her retirement party on Monday. Great time was had by all. She's off to enjoy her first grandchild and enjoy her retirement. So I just wanted to thank Ann. And I've known Ann for many years. We actually worked together here in Reading forty years ago. So, you know, it was nice to be able to see her off.
You start together, you end together.
Yeah. What, you know something I don't know? Yeah, so Ann, I think, had a nice, you know, a nice run here with the town and by all accounts, including from Jane, she's going to be sorely missed, but as she told me, she, we have a new volunteer, so.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Dan?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Barry?
Couple of things, John. Like you and Andy, I attended the school committee meeting last night. It was their first unveil of their budget. Grim is probably, my friend, Mr. Holmes, could probably come up with a better synonym, adjective, to really describe the, you know, what was happening there. You know, they've got a lot of work to do, as we do, and I think it's really kind of the, we're really getting into that, that part of the year where we're really going to have to buckle down and maybe really make some hard decisions, but there were not a lot of happy faces over on Oakland Road last night. On another note, today, Bob and myself attended, it was basically the unveiling of the signage from our wayfinding working group. You may recall that through the hard work mostly of Julie Mercier, we were able to get a grant, very highly sought-after grant, to help us with some wayfinding and branding and sort of urban planning tool. And so they kind of unveiled what it's going to look like. We walked around the town a little bit to sort of figure out where signs might go. We will be getting a presentation on the 23rd, Bob, I believe.
Yes.
So that was a really good process because it involved, it really was what you would call a public-private partnership. Obviously, town staff involved, public safety, the business community, really kind of putting our heads together and sort of figuring out, what is Reading? What do we want to, what's our statement? And how are we going to get people from here to there? So I was really excited about it. It's been going on since the summer, and I think you will be delighted when you see the quality of the work that comes here.
When do you expect to have something to review?
They're coming here on the 23rd.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so it was, I guess, our next meeting.
Good, good.
Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Andy?
So I just, like Barry, I wanted to echo and maybe add on a little bit. Barry and John and I were at the school committee presentation last night, the first in one of their three, I think, budget talks this week's. And as someone from the select board, I really focused on what their need, needs are for next year, both in maintaining the school systems and maybe getting back some of the teachers that we've lost over the past five or six years. And of course, the dollar amount that that would take. So it was a very interesting presentation, pretty clear, a lot of easy-to-read tables, and I encourage you to all, take a look at it when you have a chance.
And for those who don't know, there'll be a follow-up meeting tomorrow, Wednesday night and Thursday night, all in the RMHS Scatini Library. With that, I'll open the floor for public com-- I'm sorry, Bill.
John, if I might suggest, if members are here to listen to the National Grid gas issue, we should probably have the chief given over to you first. That might answer some of the questions.
That'd be helpful. Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Chiefs, or who would like to go first?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So Friday morning, we became aware that seventy-eight homes lost their heat through losing the, their gas supply. So because of the temperatures, we're very concerned about elderly people in their homes and the need to shelter people became a real concern. So both the Assistant Chief and I responded down to the scene and met with the supervisor for National Grid. They had, they had worked in the overnight and they were awaiting a shift change and the new supervisor was coming on. So when the new supervisor came on, they had a plan to dig the road. They found gap, they found water in the gas main and that had included the gas main and stopped the flow of gas. So they needed to open the road up and put a camera in to see what the source of that water was coming in. And they also needed to find the leak because it was water coming in, but they also had a leak to the pipe. So we let them do their work and we came back down to them about 10:30 that morning. And they reported to us that they had the gas line opened back up and people's heat was going to be restored and coordinated to do that. So we put out an Everbridge, I call it Everbridge.
Code Red.
Code Red. We put out a code red to people so they would be aware of the gas was coming back on and National Grid was going around and making sure that their heat was going to be on. But in the interim between that 7:30 in the morning, that 10:30 in the morning, we were working on opening shelters. We were working on getting the senior center open, which meant contact with DPDW to get that parking lot plowed out, facilities to get the sidewalk opened up and also the heat turned on in that building. Also coordinated with elder services, called frail elders, to make sure that we didn't have an issue with some of our frail elders that couldn't get in the car and couldn't get out of the, out of there. So when we learned that the, the gas was restored, we put out that Everbridge message and they continued to work. But they told us, and they did, that they were going to stay until they got that problem resolved. And then we touched back with them again that day and then I went down there again at 7:00 PM that night. They were still working the issue. They haven't, they hadn't found the cause where the leak was or the water entering at that point. But they assured me that everybody had heat and they were going to be able to maintain that heat through the night. They did have, they did bring in a truck from Clean Harbors to evacuate the water out that froze. They actually had to pump that water out. They brought another truck in Friday night and the overnight, they weren't able to keep up with it or the truck. I think the truck froze on Friday night, so people lost their gas again to 2:00 at night. So we became aware of it again that people were without gas in the morning. So both the Assistant Chief and I went down there first thing Saturday morning. We stayed for the day and we met with the supervisor continually to find out where they are with it, where they're going to go with it. One of the things that I was speaking to him about is that if he couldn't get the gas restored to the people, that I wanted to see him, National Grid, put people up in a hotel. So he said he'd kind of worked that issue on his end. But he was able to restore gas back to people in the morning. He reported to us around 11:00 Saturday morning that they restored the gas back and people should have heat and that they would be going around and to each individual home to make sure everything was okay. So we put out another code red message to tell the people that they had gas. Unfortunately, between the time that he told me that and the time the message went out, they lost gas against the area filled back up with, by filled back up with water and they lost heat again. So we immediately put out another code red message. Unfortunately, we're contradicting ourselves at that point because we're trying to get that message out to the people because I know if I was in home and I lost my heat, I'd wonder, most importantly, when's that coming back on? And then you can make up some arrangements, you know, when it's coming. So we put out another code red message to let people know that they were, that National Grid was on scene and they were working that issue. Then they got the gas restored again. He felt confident he was going to be able to keep it, keep those lines open.
What time of day was that? Where were you at that point in time? Was that Saturday?
That was Saturday about approximately 11:00 in the morning. We were on Charles Street.
Okay.
And they had to open, so they opened a hole on Charles Street and they had to dig down, find the main, put a saddle around it, drill into the pipe, and then put a camera down. And then they had to put that camera up the pipe and identify where the source of the leak. The camera goes approximately 250 feet, 300 feet. So they had to continually open the road. So they opened Charles at Timberneck and they couldn't find the source. Water was continually in that main, so they went up to Wakefield Street, Charles and Wakefield. They opened the road there and dug down, did the same thing, put the camera down, and that was dry up in that area. So then they know it was between Tamarack and Wakefield Street, so they needed another hole. So at the time, National Grid felt that was domestic water, town water, from a water main, getting into that line. So we brought down the water department to look for leaks. They checked a number of things. They couldn't find a leak. Then when I was on this, on Charles Street, one of the residents came up to me and he told me that he had terrible water pressure. So we found out what his house was and then we brought the water department down to that. National Grid removed snow in front of that home and we could see the water bubbling up.
Wow.
So that indicated where the water leak was. So they dug that particular area and then they also, they found the water leak to the service and they also found the gas leak. So they were about four or five feet away.
Wow.
So they were able to, through the DPDW's equipment, evacuate the water from the hole, make repairs to the gas pipe, and then make repairs to the water pipe. So approximately 4:00 that afternoon, they had the source of the water leak and they had the source of the gas leak contained. And they brought in a lot of crews to go around to the individual homes and restore their gas service, to make sure that was restored. So when we left approximately 4:00, everything was well underway and their backfilling the holes and we had the DPDW stand the road because there was water all over the road. The supervisor told me that, you know, one of his concerns was because of all the water in that main, that it would freeze at the meters. So he said that they would be going along and wrapping those meters with heat tape and insulation to head that off. So we went through the overnight hours and then I got a message from one of the residents on Tamarack Road Sunday morning indicating that he had an issue with his heat, but his elderly neighbor also, who was wheelchair-bound, also lost heat. So we sent a truck up, sent an engine and the captain up there to meet with that neighbor. He went door-to-door, identified some other homes that were without gas. And then we made sure National Grid came back and they immediately came back with their trucks. And those were issues with gas meters, so they were taking gas meters off and restoring it. They were on scene till, you know, I spoke to one of the service technicians that was there at 4:00 in the afternoon and he was sitting in the area just waiting to see if any other incidents of no heat arose and then he responded. So he was just sitting there, he said for two more hours, so to about 6:00 PM that night. So, I mean, I do know that we sent out some conflicting messages, but we're trying to let the residents know where we were with the process and what was going on, as best we could. We also put a press release out on Friday to let, to go to local media because the media had picked up the story. So we wanted to try to hit those outlets again. With the code red, you don't hit everybody. You know, when I looked at, I think we sent out six code red messages. There were seventy-eight impacted homes that have gas. We hit, we reached 300 homes, so you don't know if you hit every individual person.
So you limited it to the target area?
Yeah, you can geographically identify the areas you want to hit.
But you don't know who picked up or who received it?
Yeah, and, you know, with everybody, with landlines, you can, we can buy lists. The police department buys lists of landline phones. But, you know, people are transitioning from landline phones to cell phones and they're not picked up on those lists, so they have to manually opt into those. So you can miss people that way. So that's kind of a flaw in the system, so that's why we use the, we put out that press release on Friday. Know it on the town's website as well. Those kind of are responses. I think National Grid is here.
Before we go any farther, Greg, are there still problems that you know of as we stand here tonight?
Well, I know National Grid's gone out, we put out a reverse, never, a--
Code Red.
That's why I came tonight. We put out a code red message this afternoon, late this afternoon, to the same areas that we've been peppering with these messages, asking residents to contact us and National Grid if they have a problem with the heat or the gas service. One of the things that we found out on Sunday was because they had seen so many trucks in the neighborhood, they felt the issue was being worked on and they didn't, they didn't reach out to us, they didn't want to bother us to tell us that, you know. So--
I understand.
Yeah, so, and I know tonight, in the area of 77 Wakefield Street, we had an order of natural gas in the street. On the other side, yesterday, the National Grid guys did a repair to the main on Wakefield Street as well. So, you know, I don't think that's related to what's, what the issue is here, but they've been working in the area.
Good, thank you. National Grid, you have some statements to make this evening?
Just, first of all, I want to thank you.
Why don't you come up, introduce yourself and--
My name is Dan Cameron. I'm with National Grid, offices at 178 Memphis Street Mall.
Welcome, Dan, welcome.
I recently took over the town of Reading, but I wish I was not on site. I was dealing with a pretty good-sized gas issue in Lynn during that time period, but I was able to talk to everyone today. I was getting messages, you know, during the, during the event and spoke to all the supervisors of the chief we've referred to today. Did a great job. I mean, I don't think I could have done any better than describing what happened, you will want to see. But, you know, we eventually got to the source of the problem, which is, which is a water leak, which is always a problem any time of year, particularly in the winter. We finally did resolve it. Unfortunately, some condensation did get into the pipe as it got all the water flowing and froze up some meters. And I don't, you know, I know some of it was probably hit three times. I think out of seventy, there were seventy-eight homes services affected in total. And I think over the course of the three days, some were affected maybe once, some twice, some three times. But you can see what happened here. You know, the first, you know, our first job is to try to get the gas flowing and while the same time, we had a similar crew, as the chief described, trying to find out where the source of the, of the problem was. And I think unfortunately, the gentleman that, where the water leak was, doesn't use gas.
Right.
Because if he did, he would have known sooner.
Right, exactly.
But I found out today as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right.
So, Dan?
Yes.
So are you our guy?
No.
Are you our National Grid guy?
Yes.
Dan is a longtime Reading resident. He was a resident. Active coach all through town.
I know. And I know that some of the, some of the, you know, concerns that I had heard was that, you know, sort of, you know, our staff is down there, you know, that you guys are working really hard together, but at a certain point, it's sort of turned over to you for the customer service piece, so, you know, they can call the chiefs, they can call, you know, Town Hall, but at a certain point, it's really your, you know, your operation that's sort of handling the phone calls and, you know, in a time when, you know, there's probably a lot of towns having similar problems, you know, you probably, people are picking up the phones in other areas that might not be, you know, like the chief's office isn't picking it up. So it's good that you all have each other's phone numbers because if there's a frustration from people's part about, like, they're calling National Grid and they're on hold for a long time, or someone answers the phone, doesn't really know what's going on, it would be great that, you know, Greg or, you know, someone else would say, hey, Dan, you know, we got a problem here, you know, he could text you and you can kind of expedite. I mean, I mean, that's kind of, obviously, you know, you want to make it so that you don't really have to come out on these kinds of things. You want it to work perfectly, but it never does. But there's got to be a way, I think, for our staff, you know, whether it be Public Works or the chiefs, to be able to kind of pick up the phone and reach our guy, right? If our residents are not getting the, you know, they're not getting the answers or they're, you know, they're not, the phone's not getting picked up or, you know, not being serviced. So, you know, kind of expedite. And I don't know, hopefully you guys have all each other's phone numbers in your cell phones, so if that happens so that, you know, at least people can call us and say, hey, you know, we called the guy and it'll be 10 more minutes, it'll be two more hours, just so people get information. That's helpful.
One of the things I heard, Dan, was there was at least the implication of a lack of communication. I don't, I'm sure we'll, you'll be able to respond to it, but there was genuine confusion as to who to call. Again, I'm just reciting what I heard, but there were folks that called National Grid, got routed to a call center, but didn't have confidence that the call got through or got dispatched back to Boston or whoever was the managing agency. And so there wasn't this sense of closed loop where I make a call, I know I got through, I know the complaint was faithfully recorded, and I know somebody's going to eventually get to it. Is National Grid, and these events don't happen that often, and that's good, but when they happen, is there a way that National Grid takes ownership of the public relations part of it?
Yeah, a couple of comments on that. This obviously turned into a three-day event, three-day event, but it was three individual days. We thought, we thought we had the problem solved on Friday and then we were back there Saturday and then we're back there Sunday. If we know it's going to be a multi-day event, we move, we have an emergency operations agreement. Looks like I'm over home, we would move it right into the site, complete, you know, it's a command center. We have what they call the Incident Command, ICS, system that we would institute and kind of take over. This didn't work out on the first day and then all of a sudden, we were in the second day. But what we can do, we have the ability to do as well, is to do a reverse call. So we can do that as well. I think we don't want to confuse people, so the town, there's a lot of, been involved in a lot of these situations over the years, and sometimes the city or town will take over that, and that's fine, but we have the ability to do that as well. Well, we can send out a message based on the same communication that the chief had described. You know, we have, we have email, we have, you know, cell phones, you know, and even landlines, so we can get a message out to people.
But I think there's two parts. There's the medium part of it, which is Facebook, cell phones, landlines, you know, carrier pigeon, there's all those ways to do it. But then there's also, I know what to say, I have the message, I have the current state, I know what to say. That's the part I think the town can't help with. It's your physical plant, it's your plumbing, you, it's your guys. You guys know the current state, situational awareness at any point in time. All we're going to have is a version of that. And I think that's, in my sense, where it broke down. We, we had a version of the situation an hour or three away. That went out on reverse 911. Oops, we got to do an about face, so we've lost, you know, people walked away with a false sense of security that it was done. And again, these things don't happen that often, so it's not as if you can plan for them. But it really goes back to who owns the public relations problem for a gas or a major utility-related problem. Is it the town of Reading, which we can help, but I don't think we can ever own the message?
No, we, I mean, it's our company, it's our issue, it's our issue to resolve. So we would, we would take responsibility for any outgoing messaging, you know, to the media, you know, the media is involved and also, you know, to the town itself. So we would have responsibility for that. But I just, you know, I've been in situations where sometimes the city or town wants to take the lead and that's fine. Usually they'll check with us as to the, like, for instance, this incident that I was involved in at Lynn, we told the message in, we told them exactly what we wanted to say and so forth.
A post-mortem might need to get done, just in sort of terms of, sort of, if it happens here again in Reading, the protocol is?
Lessons learned.
Boom, boom, boom. You know, hopefully, it never happens, but, you know, it might. And maybe there's some, I mean, you do this in a lot of towns, apparently.
Yes.
Maybe there's some things that you could teach us about, based on what other towns are doing, because you see it all the time. We only see it once every generation, hopefully, but, you know, but you've got institutional memory, whereas we may not.
If there are no other questions aboard, I know there are folks here that want to, that want to speak and maybe get some answers.
Hey, a quick question, just, obviously, none of us are expert in this type of utility work. And I was wondering, going off of what Barry, I think, said, a post-mortem, is there, would you be willing, and Chief Burns be willing to get together and sort of come up with a plan moving forward for, if this happens again, houses lose heat in such frigid cold that you decide, whatever is best for the town, there's one number that people can call or one website that people can go to for up-to-date information? Because I think it was, it was scary, we got, we all got an email from a woman with a young infant who, it sounds like, still doesn't really know whether or not the problem's been resolved. So sort of a central command center that people could call and get information from, decide that, could decide that soon, moving down the road, so we have just either the town or the gas company filling the calls. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I will say that, you know, National Grid were also in the electric business. I actually came up on the electric side of the business. As you may know, that we purchased Keyspan about 10 years ago, so now we're doing gas and electric. But what you're referring to happens a lot more on the electric side. We have to set up command centers and so, particularly with storms. You know, we actually had a, you know, a precise storm this past week as well, so we are used to that on the, on the electric side. And I can certainly share those experiences and whatever we can do to make sure we have, you know, proper communication and channels and everything.
Okay. Does that sound--
Does not happen that often on the gas side.
Right. Does that sound reasonable, Chief?
Sure, sure, yeah. I think, I think the big issue was from, some of the residents didn't feel that they bought maybe closure to the incident or, so, because we did send Everbridge messages out continually, I think we sent, code red. We sent code red, red messages out, I think we sent six of them over the weekend. So I think, you know, in hindsight, you know, perhaps a final closure and a final closure press release, you know, that we could distribute?
Yeah.
Both on the websites and through social media outlets. I think that probably was the missing piece.
Okay.
Because, you know, where, you know, the issues with the, with the freezing meters and things like that, I think that probably should have responded with that. I think that, I think we'll hear tonight whether, whether or not that would have kind of solved the issue for the residents or not.
Okay, thanks.
But we did have very good contact with National Grid, with the supervisors and things like that, so, you know, I wanted to know what was going on. I was able to just go right down there and talk to the person that was, was running. He was very, you know, we dealt with two supervisors because of shift change and things and they were both forthcoming with what they were dealing with and what they thought it was and, you know, where they saw it going. But, you know, at the time, they didn't know where it was going until they found that leak and found that water source.
Any other questions before we open it up for public comment? Public comment, if you'd like to speak, just raise your hand, stand and introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, I'm Kristin Koppas. I live on Timberneck Drive. We were on the farther end of the, where the gas, the gas went out. So what I understand is the gas comes down, Wakefield down Tamarack, loops under Timberneck and is only a few houses that have gas. So we didn't really get to see a lot of the trucks coming by. We had a lot of issues contacting National Grid. I am actually the woman who sent the email today. I have a one-year-old, she's sick. I called Thursday night, I called the fire department Thursday night at 10:00 and I reported a no gas. I was told that National Grid was going to respond between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00 and that I should wait for them. Very frustrating. And I said, well, what do I do? I have a sick one-year-old. What do you suggest? Should I leave? Well, if you feel that you should leave, you should leave. Not really the response I was hoping to get from the fire department. And Chief and I spoke today, you know, perhaps it was a miscommunication somewhere, but from my point of view, the fire department knew Thursday night. And the fact that they had acknowledged someone had called before me, you know, someone clearly knew. So we had heat intermittently. We had no heat Thursday night. We had to walk across the street, dog and child towed to a neighbor who had oil, who graciously let us sleep on their couch while my husband stayed home. We had heat restored Friday afternoon. Friday afternoon, it was, it was come and go. My husband actually had to call National Grid because they kept walking by our house. He called and they said, we don't have a ticket for you. He said, what do you mean? I called Thursday night, I have a one-year-old. He said, what do you mean? I called Thursday night, I have a one-year-old, and they said, oh, sorry, you're not even in our system. But someone had, he had actually spoken to someone Thursday night because he chased a man, a National Grid worker down the road. They had no ticket, they had to put us back in the system. Clearly, you know, it's very frustrating, and I was, you know, trying to relocate my family to stay somewhere warm, my parents' house and whatnot. And then finally, you know, we got heat back, goes out again early Saturday morning. At the same time, we get a notice from, you know, code red saying heat is restored and we have no heat. And then we get another one saying it's not. So again, frustrating, a very stressful situation with radiators, pipes freezing, negative twenty-degree wind chills. The gas did come back Saturday afternoon. There was a National Grid worker chipping ice off my meter. He said that my line was not clear, and that some of the pressure was low, but thankfully we have a newer boiler, so we didn't have a running pilot, so it would just restart and it could set itself. My neighbor across the street had National Grid coming five times Friday night to re-lit her boiler, because the pilots weren't running, people were losing heat. Thankfully, we have had heat since Saturday night, but according to the tech who came to my home, he said he cannot guarantee that it's going to last through the week. As the thaw happens, they're concerned, this is coming from the workers on the street, that there's going to be more water, that the lines are going to continue to freeze, and that my meter could still freeze when the temperatures drop. So whether or not they send out something, I honestly don't believe that the issue is resolved. And it's a concern for us, because I have a, a young child at home, I work locally, I can't be running around. So I have to say I don't have much faith. I do appreciate, you know, sort of a post-mortem and what to do in the future, but what are we going to do right now? Because there are still National Grid crews out on Charles Street. They're driving down Timberneck Drive, Tamarack, Wakefield, we still smell gas. It's not, I, I don't think it's done, and I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't believe that it's done. So I also wanted to note that yesterday, and I, you know, again, I spoke with the chief earlier today, but there are some neighbors who weren't able to come tonight, and so I wanted to speak on their behalf. I had a neighbor who did not have heat yesterday, the temperature was forty-seven degrees in the home. They called the fire department, the fire department said, or the dispatch perhaps, as the chief and I spoke this afternoon, but the, the woman on the phone said, it's not our problem, call National Grid. She called National Grid and was put on hold for twenty-five minutes. And then she finally got through to someone by running down the street to a crew member and said, hey, I have no heat, can you help me? Sure, you're second on our list, we'll just, we'll just come in. Last night they had their meter replaced, and they fortunately have heat, at least tonight. Called the town manager's office today, and the individual that she spoke with hung up on her. So I don't think that is a very good form of communication. The lines of communication need to stay open between residents and the town, the fire chief, and National Grid. It's just not acceptable as a town resident to be hung up on by your town manager's office. So, you know, I agree, we need a plan of action, I think we need to have a direct line for National Grid. We can't be on hold, so, and I appreciate all of you and your concerns, but, you know, I don't think the issue's resolved, and I am concerned going forward.
Dan, with regard to the, it might come back, or you've got some residual material in the pipe and therefore risk when the temperatures drop, is there a different path to notify National Grid? Because this is now continuing, it's a chronic problem, it's no longer a one of. Is there a different path of notifying National Grid?
Fortunately, the only reason for residents is just to see how it works.
I'm sorry, say that again?
For, for, for residents to contact National Grid is to call the customer service number, which is, you know, open twenty-four seven, if they, if they continue to have an issue.
Is there an expedited process because it's a chronic problem, or is it?
Yes, yes, and, and what you said earlier about, we continue to monitor the situation out there. We had an unrelated problem here. This is, you know, a, you know, heightened, heightened awareness within the company. We have, we're confident that the water is out of all the pipe. I'm not sure what the tech was referring to, but, you know, we, we know that the water leak caused the cast iron pipe to actually undermine, and I, because the, the leak in the, in the pipe was only a few feet away from where the water leak was. So, you know, we're confident that we've resolved where this problem started. We are taking a look at possibly replacing it, you know, our long-term goal is to replace all cast iron pipes throughout the state of Massachusetts. There's a lot of it out there, you know, the infrastructure in Massachusetts is very old. So, and, and what we're replacing with is plastic. It's our, we have projects already ongoing, you know, within the community, we might accelerate that.
But narrowly around the problem at hand?
Yep.
One-eight-hundred if they smell gas, one-eight-hundred if the meter freezes, one-eight-hundred if there's no heat?
That's correct.
Is there a case number they should refer to, so to get that expedited? This is not a new problem, this is an extension?
No, no particular case number, just a, you know, what, what address that they're calling from.
Eric.
Dan, so we now know there's about seventy, eighty houses sort of involved. It's fixed for the most part, but we are expecting a freeze which could actually, you know, make the problem worse. So I'm really concerned for, for her family with a one-year-old. Can you just sort of say, you know, if, if it's three in the morning and it happens, right, or, or, you know, eleven o'clock at night, can you basically guarantee that, say, okay, get out of your house, go to the Hilton, you know, we'll put you up until we fix it? Because now, you know, you're not guaranteeing it for the whole neighborhood. It's really only half a dozen, maybe ten houses. So this way, if they, they call and they can't get, at least they know, okay, we'll get out and the gas company will take care of it. Can you guarantee that? Can you, I don't know what you can say, but...
Yeah, every, every situation regarding that is different, you know, we have done that in the past. If this, if this problem continued, it was more serious, you know, a multi-day event, perhaps we would've, we would've, we would've, we would've considered that. But I, I can't, I can't say right now that I absolutely can say, go to hotel if this happens again. We'd have to, you know, we, you know, we are, what I can suggest is that perhaps when the temperatures do, do start to, we do have people on twenty-four seven, but we stay close to this Reading situation so that we're aware, you know, that, you know, something could happen. And we don't think it will, but if it does, we're, we're ready to respond.
Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Kathy Donnelly, I live at two forty-six Charles Street. I got to know the deputy chief quite a bit Saturday. I'd like to underscore without repeating, if I could, first of all, I will say that the National Grid teams that were out there, we called National Grid at eight forty-five, nine o'clock on Thursday night. So that's when we realized that we had been out of gas. They were at our house at ten PM, back again at two AM. The, the folks that we dealt with were wonderful, they, they were very clear and did communicate what, what they were researching, and even said, you know, what they didn't know. So I can't comment on that. Two points, I think the chief, you mentioned the comment about the code reds feeling, I think that it's not really closure, they just felt completely unreliable, and where I mentioned where I live, those photos, I live right there, where the water was broke. It felt as though the message hadn't, didn't agree with what was actually happening at that point in time. So I think our confidence was tested in that regard. So I think that your comments, you sir, about how the status is, is good to hear, and everybody would like to know that. Because if you're in day five, so Thursday night, Friday night, and certainly the fridge attempts are adding an elevation of concern, but day five or six, every time there's a National Grid truck now, everybody's very concerned, what's going on, they're patching, it's not a new issue. Or, you know, are people having gas issues because of more blockages and freezing meters? So, you know, how it comes together as your post-mortem, or how these code red calls go out, that created a significant level of concern. The callbacks that I made to National Grid, didn't call because I didn't smell gas, I didn't call our fire department, I called the service provider. Saturday morning, when I called Thursday night, the person was direct, clear, yes, I've gotten many calls from your street, you should expect a team out there very soon. That was the eight forty-five, nine o'clock call, the knocking on the door came at ten PM. So our experience was, I guess I would call a very rapid response, especially given the snow at that point. But Saturday morning, when we went out again on Friday night, so that was a different situation. Maybe Saturday's calls get routed because it's a weekend, New York didn't want to talk to us, just needed Massachusetts. So that one-eight-hundred number goes directly to New York first. So you, you gotta realize when you're on the other line, that's just not acceptable. The, the time of out of gas is a little longer than I heard tonight, and I think that that should be acknowledged. And that's why, it started Thursday night, so when you and your team became aware of it, we'd all been going through it for twelve, some, fifteen hours, call it. So it's still, at that point, it still hadn't had a resolution, and then the resolution was temporary, as, as we've all gone through it. So I felt that we didn't, we didn't really feel our town was there. It was always, it was National Grid until Saturday morning, very early with the water department. They weren't really visible as a resident, quite frankly, until Saturday. It was, it was very much an active all-hands. Clearly, everybody was involved at that point, but Friday restored, and then out by five, six, personally, I was until probably eight-thirty, nine o'clock. We saw the fire, excuse me, the police cars, the road closures, and National Grid. So we didn't hear out that there was a problem again after we were told it was fixed by our town, because that was how it was communicated. And then we were waking up and still cold again, and it was still National Grid giving us information, or, you know, trying to say we're working on it. So there was more time out of gas, and we, I think we could've, we wouldn't, wanted to see the town there a little more, or at least the communication from the town, that we are involved and we'll let you know versus it being fixed. So, that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Gary Baker, I live on Evergreen Road. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allotting probably more of your agenda than you had intended for us to be able to hear from the chief, from National Grid and from the residents, we certainly appreciate that. I have much of the same story that Kristin and Kathy just shared. I could repeat everything that the chief had just said, so I'm not going to. Thursday at eight o'clock, we started having issues, and, you know, it just progressed throughout the weekend. I want to say, from a personal perspective, the men on the street, men and women on the street were fantastic, both from National Grid and from the town of Reading, from the fire department and from our police department. I was out there, I woke up Saturday morning, and I got about halfway down my stairs and realized we were out of heat again, because I could feel the change in temperature from step three to step five. Had breakfast, took my time, waited for something to happen, nothing happened, called National Grid, and we'll talk about that, Mr. Cameron, in a moment. But I went for a walk with my dog, because the only way that I was gonna get reliable information was to talk to Paul, to talk to the cops doing the detail, and to talk, talk to the guys digging the holes. And that's how I got my information, not from the night, from code reds or anything like that. So, so that's how I got my information, and I was able to share it with a subset of my neighbors on a text message and on Facebook. So fortunately, we had that. And John, that predated or pre-timed you being anywhere close to on the scene, to be completely honest. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge that the men and women that were on the ground did a great job, and they battled the elements as best they could, because it was, like I said, two degrees Saturday morning when I got out. The other thing I want, I want to acknowledge on a positive is our neighbors. You know, we all moved to Reading for a reason, the neighbors in the, in the area, in the immediate area, save for one or two, were actually phenomenal. Banded together, people were offering space heaters, we borrowed space heaters, hey, North Reading Lumber has space heaters. We were all keeping each other informed as best we could, so from a town perspective, from that side of things, we did great. I do have some concerns, and they rest, again, some, you know, sometimes with, with, with the nine-one-one calls, I felt like at times we were back on the Abe Lincoln back in two thousand and three with the mission accomplished banner behind us, because we claimed that it was fixed, and it wasn't. So, you know, we've, we've already put that on the record, we're not gonna do that. Dan, the call center in Brooklyn was, for me, hit or miss, it was fifty-fifty. Thursday evening, great lady on the phone, I wish I could remember her name, because she was fantastic. I was probably twelfth to thirteenth to call in, she knew exactly what was going on, she handled it beautifully. They'll be there by midnight, call us back if you need anything else going on. Called at three AM because National Grid didn't come to my house at that point. Got, I got a gentleman on the phone, he was fantastic. Every other person I talked to down there, one was named Tina, one was named Sabrina, did not comprehend the magnitude of the situation or our frustration. And told one, one of, it was Sabrina who told one of my neighbors, that issue's been resolved, call back, call the main line after eight. This was Saturday morning when it was, again, two, two degrees. So from your call center's perspective in Brooklyn, they didn't, either information wasn't passed on from shift to shift, like it could or should've been, or they just didn't want to hear from us anymore. I don't know what reality is, but, like I said, it was fifty-fifty, some great and some on the complete opposite end of the spectrum. So I think that from a, from a retraining point, point of view, is something that needs to be brought up within the call center and National Grid. I do want, I, I know I'm taking up probably more time than you want, but I do want to raise a few additional concerns. You say that the problem is fixed. We're all skeptical. We want to know, is it truly fixed, and is it fixed permanently? Because we're in, it's January ninth, there are another three months of cold, harsh weather that we're, you know, looking at ahead. We're all on pins and needles. There's a truck, one of the trucks is at the corner of Charles and Wakefield right now, poking around someone's foundation. We're, we see the yellow lights come up the street, we're on pins and needles, because we don't know if our gas is gonna go out again. Today's not so bad, it's about as warm outside as my sunroom was inside Friday morning. So, 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 you know, we're very concerned that it's gonna happen again. My neighbors who have outside gas meters have their meters wrapped in heat tape. It's a temporary fix, and I think we all know that. In fact, National Grid told my neighbor across the street that they're gonna come back in three weeks and remove her, her heat tape. Then what? So, I mean, three weeks from now is the end of January, we still have February, March, and we know what the weather can be in March. And then moving forward, National Grid needs to have some kind of alert when someone from nine four-two or nine four-four calls in, or has a National Grid account tied to this particular neighborhood, so that when we call in, it flags history of major issues in this area, and it needs to be addressed correctly, politely, rapidly, and with the respect that we feel that we should be getting. We're all been, you know, we've paid for National Grid, I've been in town for twenty years, I've been in my current house for fourteen years. I've paid you guys a lot of money, I expect, I expect to be respected when I call in for, for, you know, for an issue. I'll give you one, one last anecdote, I called your emergency line, must've been Saturday afternoon. I was told, because I didn't smell gas, it wasn't an emergency. I explained to the woman, I've been without heat for the last, more time in the last thirty-six hours than I've had heat. My heat, my, my gas is out, this is an emergency, and when she pushed back, you know what I did? I smelled gas, and she said, okay, I'll have somebody come over with me out. I had to lock, because they weren't responding, this was, again, either Tina or Sabrina, I don't remember which one at this point. But I had to do that because I needed somebody at my house to at least look at it and make sure that I was ticketed, and that you guys knew that I was out of gas, but they weren't listening. Thank you, mate, thank you very much.
With, just triggering off that, Dan, is there a way we could get us, if it's already developed fine, if not, is there a way we could get a current, current state of what's going on right now, the status? What remaining work tickets is, that you know are yet to be executed? When do you think they'll be complete? Just some sense of progress and for the community. I think, you know, synthesizing what I'm hearing here, it's, it's regaining the trust and regaining an awareness of the status and the time to done.
As of today, you know?
Not, not right now, but, you know, within the next twenty-four hours, twelve hours.
I mean, you have to, we have to keep in mind that, you know, this, this was a water leak, all right? So we're dealing with a problem that happened, and we think it's solved. Yeah, yes, we're absolutely at a critical time in the year. Through the cameras, what the chief described, you know, we're confident that all that water's out of, out of the system in that area. Could there be, obviously, some, some condensation, exposed to stuff on Sunday, and flows up some of these meters based on the, the temperature and so forth. I mean, right now, we're, with all the tools that we have, we're confident that we have all the moisture, and, you know, out of those lines. That's where we stand right now. Now, we will continue to, to monitor the situation very closely, because it's not often that water gets into a gas line. It's a rare occurrence, but it's a serious occurrence. So we will, you know, be monitoring this very closely, especially as the temperatures get lower, you know, probably starting next week. So, but certainly, it's like, I don't know, I can communicate through you or whoever, you know, tomorrow, we can, you know, this, this issue was continually being talked about at the company, believe me, it's not, you know, just because we may have, most of the crews have vacated the area, we have, you know...
Again, I think there's two points. One is that there's activity internally, and I get it, and I appreciate and trust that. I think there's evidence of that outside the company for those that are customers and using the product, that they know that that's happening and have confidence that it's getting to done. Is there any way that either a state, the current state is of, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday morning can be, state can be made? And just some view of what the next few days might be? I, I don't think it has to be terribly long, but it has to show some sense of progress.
You want us to communicate through the town?
Yeah, through public safety, sure.
We can, we can do that tomorrow, for sure, yeah, and somehow communicate it out to the residents?
Or you could give out your cell number, that wouldn't solve it.
As long as the chief has.
I'll get it from Chris.
Any other comments? Yes.
Just to that point, my name's Demetra, I live nowhere near this, I live on the other side of town, I'm sorry you're going through this. I'm sorry you're going through this. When we had issues on Oak Street because there was a big sidewalk and water main and everything was being done, a contact sheet was made of all of the homes on Oak and it was shared with the various people in charge, Water and I don't know who else was involved. And that was a great way, so we got communicated with very efficiently. And that might help. 78 houses, contact sheet that you can then deal with, I don't know.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've done that in the past. Uh, again, this was a...
I know, you were trying to catch up.
You know, let me give you an example. Um, if, if power, well, and we knew it was going to be three, four days before we get power back, we would institute that right away. But I think, you know, we were confident on Friday that everything was all set and then it, you know, just, so.
We, we are where we are, we can't change history. The thought is, can we recover a bit in terms of reestablishing trust in the utility? Just give folks a status, a sense of when it's completed. I don't think it has to be exhaustive. And then, well, you know, if folks have additional comments, you know, we'll work through public safety and let you know. We know where to find you.
I would like to make sure that we, we don't have any lingering bad blood with the residents in Town Hall. So if, the, the, you said your, your neighbor contacted, uh, somebody in Town Hall and got disconnected or something happened, um, if you could get that straightened out. Talk to Bob and, and so that there's no lingering, lingering.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Lingering bad blood.
I also had one question to go off, uh, Mr. Vermin's question about hotels. I think not only I, but some other neighbors might have incurred expenses related to this. You know, we are, I'm going to get a gas bill next month and I still have to pay it, but I also had to go out and spend a few hundred dollars on some pretty large heaters to warm my home to prevent my radiators from bursting. So where do I send those bills? Because I don't think I should have to incur it, it was not my fault. And I think that the residents, perhaps we can, I don't know if there's an answer to that today or, I, but I don't think I should have to incur that.
Dan?
There is, there is a claims process within the company.
Okay.
I'm the number one to talk right here, but, um, yeah, you can call in.
If you could just let the chief know that.
He'll be assigned a rep and they'll follow up on it.
So, so if, if I may, when I was on the phone with one of the nice, uh, helpful, helpful folks, they gave me the claim number, but they wouldn't, um, promise, guarantee, whatever you want to call it, that they would cover the claim. Is there a magic number, a magic word, a magic phrase that we should be putting off those claims?
Perhaps your...
Gas would seem to work.
Dan Cameron said that, that is.
No, I will not, uh, I will tell you this, Bob, you'll know, we're a regulated company. We're regulated by the Department of Public Utilities. There are rules and regulations as to when we reimburse people for expenses, not very clear. So I, I'll just leave it at that. So I, I can't say, because I don't work in the claims department, but all I can say is, you know, share the number and, and, you know, you're free to, you know, put together your, your expenses and, and make the claim.
Any other comments? Yes.
So I have one that's not related to this, but I don't want to move on if people aren't ready. Are we moving on?
Any other comments on the, the natural gas discussion or National Grid or the town's response? Not all dismissed, the chiefs and Dan, thank you very much.
Okay.
So I'm Demitra Zekras, I live on Oak Street. So I have a concern and it's about, not, not this at all, it's about campaigning and governing. And I'm glad that I know later, I, I know later you're talking about your policies and this is related to that, but not entirely, so. Three concerns in particular. This is very uncomfortable to talk about. I'm into campaigning and other people in this room are into campaigning and it can get ugly. Governing and campaigning need to be separated and I'm feeling like they're not. Couple of examples. This year, like the year before and probably years before that, although I don't know. The current chair is serving during his final year of his term. And that means predictably that he's running. And that means, in my opinion, that by ignoring that policy, for if you voted outright, one of you didn't, ignoring that policy puts into peril the sort of separation that we really want to keep between campaigning and governing. At a meeting at the Board of Selectmen here a couple of months ago, the current chair launched his reelection campaign. And that's not right. I have no idea if it's illegal, I have no idea if it breaks some sort of law, but I just know it's not right because that's not the business of this board. So that's an example of where it's probably very difficult to maintain that separation and nonetheless, there it went. And not only was that sort of announced, there was a lot of talk about it. That was a couple of months ago. And then just recently on Facebook and this, now we are into social media, which is a mess, um, or can be. The current chair's reelection campaign Facebook page posted to a variety of Reading pages that a lot of people here probably follow, like I do, about the half hour meeting before the meeting tonight, open hours, you guys call it. And it was, it was misleading because it implied that as part of his reelection, he was sitting for half an hour before this meeting and invited people to come and talk to him, when in fact, all of you do those open hours on a rotating basis. So when Oak Street was going through its nightmare and a couple of representatives from our neighborhood came and spoke, Mr. Ensminger was on duty that night and he listened to the complaints and he jumped into the fray and he helped solve the issues. And that's, you know, your job. And we are all grateful to you for doing your job, but it's your job. It's not where you get to campaign. And campaigning in a public building, it's very tricky. So, I'm going to ask you to follow your policy. There was sort of a quote from Pirates of the Caribbean as well as our lawyer who said it's more of a guideline. And it's not, it's a policy that the board made, so I suggest you follow it going forward. And I suggest it very strongly. Secondly, I suggest you have a really serious discussion about social media and come up with a really good policy because it's very easy to screw it up, especially if you're not really good at social media and people of a certain age might not be very good at social media. I'm saying that about myself. And then finally, the fiery person in me considered asking you to step down, effective immediately. But I think it would be irresponsible because you're in the mid, middle of a big budget situation, the override, there's a lot going on. So I think it would be irresponsible. So the responsible part of me won't ask for that, but I feel that strongly about keeping this stuff separate. If you're in your final term, you shouldn't be the chair.
Since I'm, since I'm the subject of all of those topics, I'd like a few minutes to respond.
Well, because I spoke to, about campaigning and government, yeah.
Perfection-based response. Can I steal the projector button?
Uh, yeah, how do you want to do it?
Just click me up?
How do I do that?
Uh, just give me the light control.
This one here?
Yes, please.
You spoke about the guideline, what is what a policy regarding chairs serving in their last year. I did an analysis of the last 17 years. In 2011, the policy changed, the practice changed from chairs being selected in June to chairs being selected in April. That was before I was on the board. From 2000, sorry, from 2000 to 2017, I've catalogued who the chair was, shown here by an asterisk, and whether or not they served in their last year. The policy you speak of has been in practice since prior to this day. In, in years when the board did reorganize in June, the policy was observed less than half the time. The policy exists for one purposes, purpose primarily, so that town meeting has the stability of a chair such that after the election, the chair is not ousted and then you suddenly have the state of the town or the need for the individual who's been speaking for the entire year to be able to present at town meeting. If you reorganize in June, you know, and the chair doesn't serve, you know safely that there's no way for the chair to be ousted. We reorganized now in April and have for the last six years. There's no opportunity therefore, for, uh, other than the fact that the individual has three or four weeks to produce the state of the town, there's no opportunity for the role of chair to be interrupted with a, a three-month, um, ad hoc appointment to cover and then a reorganization in June. Since 2011, we have reorganized in April and each of those years, the chair has served in their last year. And prior to that, even when the chair reorganized in June, the policy was observed less than half the time. The need disappeared in 2011. Even when the need was there, it wasn't after. That's just facts. I went back and looked.
Yeah, thank you because I didn't, and I didn't know the history of this. So, may I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, I'm guessing then that when you do talk about policy, you're going to argue that it's an obsolete one.
I don't know what we'll say, that's the board's judgment.
Okay, so then, what is so bad if the chair is not reelected?
The, the issue is, if the board reorganizes in June, I'm sorry, in, in June and the chair serves in the last year, when April comes around the next year and if the chair is not reelected, you have a period from April whenever to the June that you've got to fill with a brand new chair.
Right. But you reorganized in April.
Pardon me?
But you reorganized in April.
And the board has since 2011 reorganized in April. I, I knew no other method but that. I didn't at the time understand about the history of this particular topic.
Right, so the policy of not electing a chair in their third year of their term makes even more sense because you reorganized in April, right?
No, because you're guaranteed that in April you have a new chair. We reorganize immediately after the election. If it was in June, you'd have a three-month period with a brand new individual. If it's in April, you start faithfully every April. There's no situation where you have a temporary assignment. You have somebody there serving for 12 months.
I think Demitra's point may, might, I think, I, I, pardon me if I'm not interpreting.
I'm clearly not making it.
I think Demitra's point is that, um, going forward in, in, when the board, if the board reorganizes in April and the person who was elected chair is in the last year of their term and presumably runs again, there runs the risk of a perception problem that the chair may use his or her, um, role as the chair for unfair advantage and therefore it looks, you know, it, it doesn't look good. Am I, did I capture that well?
Yes.
But this is the first time, to my knowledge, and I've been through a number of these seasons, that this issue has ever been raised.
This issue's in my six years has never been even...
I, I've never heard that raised, ever.
But that doesn't mean it's, it's an irrelevant issue.
No, but it's never been raised.
So, I mean, but, but, John, if I could, to Demitra's point, um, you know, this is a board, you know, both here and on maybe on Oakland Road, that, you know, if you read all the comments in social media and all the stuff that we got on our own survey, we're laboring under a trust problem. And so therefore, we have to do everything that we can to assure the public that we have the best interest of the public in mind. And so, having a policy that we haven't paid attention to, right? One of two things happens is that we're telling people we don't care about our own policies, which therefore creates a trust problem in my mind, or we should just basically scrap what we have and try to look at it again. And just, Demitra, I hope you stay around and hope folks, I, I have a number of proposals that we're going to make, you know, that I'm going to try to make going forward about Article One that addresses some of these things, that tries to get at what's the best way to govern ourselves, both internally here as, as a board and also how we perceive that, you know, how we are perceived to the public, right? And, you know, if you look at Article One, which is our policies, half of it deals with paper correspondence, 17 pages of letterhead and all kinds of stuff. You look at this and it's like, it was a great intent when we did it, but it needs to be totally looked at. And, you know, having a social media policy, your point about sort of, you know, someone who's running for reelection posting from their campaign page, you know, kind of having it murky, it makes it murky in some ways only because we don't have our own policy at all. This board doesn't, this board has no way of communicating to the public right now other than sometimes we'll ask Bob, you know, for the town page to put something out. This board internally as a board has not been able to communicate with the public and also going back to the survey, when we asked, what is the way that you get your information most about what's going on in town, the least, the lowest bar from my elected officials? Now I look at it as, we have an opportunity here to really, um, to really help and communicate as much as we can to get into people's living rooms, to get onto their phones and really talk about what we're doing here in the town of Reading. That has to come from the Board of Selectmen, not from me as one selectman or Mr. Arena, a selectman and a candidate for reelection, because that just makes things really murky. So, stick around, please. I, I hope we're going to have a good discussion on, um, on just sort of how to make this work better. But thank you for bringing it up.
If I could say something just briefly, John?
One moment, Adrian. Your central thesis is the hypothesis that there's, I'm sorry?
What?
Your central thesis is that there's something untoward about, or unbecoming about the conduct. All of us like you are ordinary citizens. We're not special. We just have a bit more time on our hands or an interest in the subject matter. I like what I do. One of the opportunities Facebook and LinkedIn and Twitter and texting have given us is a unique opportunity to reach out to individuals that 15 years ago didn't exist. And it's really paid dividends. We heard moments ago about a discussion about a natural gas issue. We probably had more dialogue on Facebook on that one topic than I've seen, I bet there was over 150 comments when you add them up across all the various threads. So there is a real opportunity to use that. I do think that there is value in having a chair communicate and I do think there is value in any reelection campaign to use that same vehicle. We don't check our First Amendment rights at the door when we take office and we don't check them when we take the chairmanship position. And as long as there's a clean delineation, I think, I think we can find a happy medium in the middle. Yes? Demitra? Oh, Andrew.
Oh, yeah, on, on a slightly different tack, what, something you said, Demitra, raised a, a question in my, in my mind and, and that's a little different from what we've been talking about. You said you had, you had contemplated in asking John to step down to avoid the appearance of, or, or to get back in line with our priorities, but you, you were reluctant to do that because we're gearing up for an override and budget discussions and things like that. And, and I think what, that made me ponder is the role of the chair in, in, on a five-person board of selectmen, it doesn't have a first selectman, it has five people and a chair and, and what, what role do we want the chair to be? I mean, I, I think the way it's described in the policies and there's nothing in the, in the, in the bylaw or the town charter that I can find out on this, is the role sets, uh, the chair, excuse me, the role of the chair is to set the agenda and to call meetings and, and that's, that's about it. So I think, um, we, we want to think hard on, you know, making sure that the, the role of the chair remains that or not and then, and develop our policies accordingly.
So you're saying like an equal of five?
Yeah, I, I think we're a board of five, not a board of, of, yeah.
And none of us speaks for the board either.
Right, right.
One of the, one of the great tendencies is to speak as if you were in front of the five in public and in fact...
Yes.
That's, that's a common and natural error and it's one that gets us into trouble.
Yes.
Any other public comments? Bob?
I just want to make one comment on this. Demitra, I will say to the board's credit, or at least a year and a half ago, they started attacking the fact that these policies haven't been reviewed for 20 or 25 years. So I'll give them credit for that. And, you know, as John just showed with the charter, I'm sure there's lots of inconsistencies in that. We've been through the general bylaws, the charter, you know, a lot of things hadn't really been done in 20 years and need to be done a little more often than that. So at least they'll give the board credit for saying, look, we've got to spend some time on this and what they decide is what they decide. But I, I will say, well in advance, they recognized, if you're going to have policies, you ought to follow them or change them. And that's been the mantra through all of our written documents is if that's what the charter says, we should do it. We don't like what it says, we should change it. So at least that process has started.
Yeah.
Demitra?
Just, I, I agree and I appreciate that. I would push back a little bit on the notion that I'm the only person who ever thought that this was a concern because I can assure you, I'm not the only person who ever thought this was a concern. But I do have the courage in not enough matters sometimes so that I speak up about it. But thank you, I appreciate it. But thank you, I appreciate it. I wish I could stay, but I've, I've just got places to be, so.
Well, it'll be on YouTube, so.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, Bob?
Just two things, actually just one thing. We'll deal with the other one later. The library trustees have formally requested to be on your agenda at the next meeting to appoint a library trustee. So, we have two applications so far, and the board would like to meet approximately at 7:15, and I'll confirm that with Amy this week.
Does that, does that require us too? Or is it just that?
The article in the paper was totally erroneous.
Okay, yeah, I read something differently.
I didn't see the-
And there are no interviews going on, other than this committee-
Right.
...of the whole.
Yes, and Amy checked, the last time you did it, it was, I, I don't want to try to remember, I think it was John Brzezinski. It was five selectmen and five trustees, just like the school committee. They have the same number. You meet as a group of the whole, the majority of the 10s appoint someone.
And they have two applications, is it?
And so far, I'm aware of two applications. But just so you're aware of that, and I'll-
What's the meeting date again, please?
That's your next meeting, the 23rd.
Oh, our 23rd.
Right here, at 7:15 most likely, but I'll confirm that.
Be the first item on the agenda for-
Yeah. Because that's not in any of your written documents yet, because it's ongoing.
All right.
That's, I can, I can stop there.
All right.
Thanks.
The next topic on the agenda is the reappointment of a retirement board member.
That is Carol Roberts, our former HR administrator. You appointed her almost a year ago to fill out the rest of her term through December. They have not met since December 31st, so I'd ask you to reappoint her for another three-year term. I emailed her today. She's been very helpful. She's been very good. And obviously, her background is perfect for the retirement.
Does she want to do it?
I told her she wants to.
This is the kind, this is the kind of employees we have.
Whether she's willing to do the whole three years, we'll see, but she can always quit if she wants.
Okay.
But yes, and I'm told, because the retirement board obviously deals with people retiring, so many people know her, there's a great deal of confidence in that, so she's a good choice.
The chair, move that the board of selectmen appoint Carol Roberts to the retirement board, and the term expired December 31st, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
John Hallsy, seconds. Any further discussion on the motion? All of us in favor of the proposed motion, raise your hand. Five, zero. That's quick. It's one of the quickest things we've done. Next is a, the discussion is Barry mentioned on our policies, this being Article One, general operating.
Do you want me to give an overview or jump right to one?
For those watching, although it's going to take some time, why don't you give an overview just for context?
Quickly, yeah.
All right, I'll do it quickly. I'm going to go sequentially through the existing articles. Number one is a discussion tonight, general operating procedures.
Do you want to show something on the back here?
Oh, yeah. What do you need to do?
No, I'm asking you to put the-
Yes, I did have something. I didn't realize it wasn't there. I used to have it in the back of my head. Thank you. That's interesting. That's not on my screen.
Oh, that's on my screen, that's fine.
That could get you in trouble.
I'm having a senior moment here.
Well, I'll talk.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We'll have a brief discussion, or as long as selectmen want, for general operating procedures. I don't expect to solve that tonight. I just wanted to introduce the topic, ask for your help, maybe one or two selectmen will work with staff to hammer out some alternatives, and then present it to the full board, and then you have your full discussion. And this could take a while, and that's okay. Article Two, John Hallsy and I have been working sporadically on this, and this is kind of a big effort. You know, we'll bring this back. I'm, I'm going to probably honestly say March, but maybe late February for more discussion, because again, this is a big topic, there's going to be a lot of discussion. Public hearings will follow each of those, assuming there's going to be changes made. Tonight, we may be able to finish off-
So, Bob, on that one, will we continue to do what we've been doing, which is meet-
Yes, yes.
You know, particularly with some staff, some daytime things to-
Yeah, Matt and Gene especially have been helpful, so.
To get some recommendations to bring back here.
Yep. Article Three is, is a continued hearing for tonight. Town council's here to discuss that with you and keep you in line. You've had some discussion with Department of Public Works on their policies. I didn't think it was a big enough issue to bring all by itself. It didn't fit in tonight. I'll bring that back whenever you want and consolidate that. And the last few are very, well, two of them are very small. Community services, which is now a portion of a department, and public safety, which really is just petroleum storage. I think we could carve that up and call it something else. It doesn't need to be standing alone. We'll come back with that also in the spring. And I, I don't think there's really anything controversial there or things that are out of date. You had a presentation last summer from Judy Perkins, our HR director. Personnel policies are a very important thing. Quite honestly, and I say a little bit about it here, and I don't want to say too much, we're in the middle of a project with Labor Council and with Carol Roberts, and in the middle of collective bargaining. Because of the work we're doing there, I purposely want the personnel policies to follow all of that. We have eight unions. I do have some tentative settlements. I don't expect to have eight settlements until probably about town meeting, if I'm optimistic. So, I, it will be most appropriate to bring this back to you, but in the right time.
So, we'll do that in executive session?
It depends what the topic is, quite honestly. It could well be that you do it in open session.
Okay.
If it involves unions and collective bargaining, it may well take executive session. I'll ask for some guidance on that. So, that's the overview. And you, we can discuss this, but I did want you to think about these different issues, and to the extent we haven't yet broached a topic, if one or two of you would volunteer to assist, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to be involved, perhaps some of the others would be involved.
Pardon me, which one?
I can, I can send out an email and perhaps lay it out and get responses and then-
I'd like to, I'd like to do whatever number one.
I would like to be involved in that one as well.
Okay. Let me take notes. So, John, H., and Barry for one?
Bob, just because I have some experience, unfortunately, in this field, petroleum storage, as sexy as that sounds, I'd be happy to help with that.
Okay. We handle that through the fire department.
Sadly, yes. It's all the same.
Keep going somewhere with that.
All petroleum.
Okay, that's, that's good, that's helpful. We can take Article One wherever you'd like tonight. Barry and I said he'd contact me early, he has some comments. I laid out some questions and some comments, very much in draft form, and I've not run this past, past town council. These are just my thoughts. The first comment I made, and I will be quick, I cannot find what section of the bylaws matches this, so I just highlighted to remember, to remind myself. It's kind of sad that I couldn't find it.
So, that's some historical reference that's been lost.
So, that's a historical reference that got lost, and I'll need to try to track back. I've crossed out something which said, "These things are not part of the policy, but they're in an appendix." I don't see why it's in a policy, you know, statement or document if it's not relevant to the policy. And PS, I never found those documents.
So, another missing breadcrumb.
Right. You've already discussed the reorganization, you know, the month of June, you know, you needed to discuss that. My only comment from 20 years of observation is, I think it is challenging and somewhat difficult for a selectman in April to speak at April town meeting. I think that's, 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 that's a lift. That's, that's not an easy thing, especially, well, it depends who it is, but especially a newly elected one. That's a big task.
Although if they've a vice chair and they're sort of moving up the chain-
Certainly. If it's someone that's existed and is well-seized, it's fine, but it's still, it's still a big ask, because you don't nominate a chair until three weeks, two weeks before, three weeks before town meeting.
Let me argue the other side for a moment. We're all here hearing the same material. We're all talking, we're all contributing. In some sense, you could drop, you could say bang, it's you or you or you or you.
Yeah.
And no one is any better or any worse off, to start from that moment. None of us is, is any more ready or any less ready, because we've all been exposed to the same good or bad material. So, the only thing it does do to you is time, but I don't think the time element has made any worse or better.
It's clearly your call. You, you really got, you know, the people that have to do it, so.
It's individual. I happen to like the time pressure, because it helps, it makes you hustle, as opposed to, I get months, I don't have to worry about that.
Right.
In this regard, the, the bylaw states through 312 that, that each board committee or commission shall meet at the call of the chair, no earlier than June 1st, no later than June 31st of each year. And so, aren't we obligated to follow the bylaws in that?
They shall meet? Read that again.
Says, "Each board committee or commission shall meet at the call of the chair, no earlier than June 1st and no later than June, July 31st of each year, and shall then elect its chair and vice chair for the new fiscal year." So, it seems to me that, that's, and that would avoid the, somebody getting elected the chair in April and then having to go speak at town meeting. Plus, it's the bylaw, I think we're supposed to follow.
I think that's something that whoever's working on this should obviously work with town council. All I know is to John's point, it hasn't been followed for a long time.
I have a question. When, when and what, I know when it changed, why did it change?
What changed?
No idea.
What changed?
Going from organizing, reorganizing in June to-
I was here, and I have no idea why.
Like, it, it had to have, someone had a public policy reason-
Were you the town manager then? I don't think so.
No, I wasn't the town manager, but-
That it made sense, you know, for efficiency and purpose.
I don't know, I don't even remember any discussion or any issue or any, it just happened until I saw the spreadsheet.
I mean, do, do, does anyone see a reason not to follow the bylaw in this?
Let me see, that's, but it's not, it's not specific to the board, it's all boards and all-
Appointed boards, appointed boards committees and commissions.
So, we're not an appointed board.
So, we're not an appointed board. Yeah, okay.
So, it doesn't apply.
I mean, the school committee reorganization-
They're appointed effective July 1st, so that makes sense for them.
That's how preference, because the children generally graduate.
Right, that's a calendar consideration.
Again, that's their preference, because-
Does anybody know if the school committee has a prohibition in their policies against the chair serving?
I don't know, Dan.
Well, they reorganize in June.
Right.
But do they have that provision also?
But is the chair in the last year? Is the chair the last year of his term, like, for example, the recovery?
I don't think so, because last year, the chair was up for reelection.
Yeah, I believe they act the same way you do.
And this year, no. But, I mean, I think it has-
I don't know what their, what their policies-
I don't know if they have a policy.
All right. So, next, there's a, there's a couple sections in here that refer to Board of, Board of Selectment subcommittees. I can't remember the last time that that term was used or the construct was used by this or any previous board, so I think that's something you should discuss.
What do you think the original purpose of that was?
I've heard the term working groups, and I don't know legally if there's a distinction. I know I can have working groups very different from theirs legally.
That's right. Because you don't have to obey the open meeting.
Right.
But we have had groups of two-
Yes.
-work on things.
The volunteer subcommittee.
Barry and I are preparing to work on something.
But you do act as a posted subcommittee.
I mean, Kevin Sexton and I, you know, worked on, you know, firearm safety for almost a year. So, I know we've done it.
Yeah, and the question is, what should the policy say to address that, I guess? And I just raise it as a question. You know, if that's a subcommittee, you should discuss it and make sure you've got some good construct for it. This policy, I will suggest change. It says you have liaisons to departments, and if you look at your current liaison list, you have some examples of the DPW, three of you are liaisons for very different reasons. I don't think there's any reason why you have to limit yourself to have one liaison for a department, when there might be reasons you each have interest to divide up, so the language can change or that can just go away.
Does it say now? It says that you should all-
It says that, you know, the purpose of establishing Board of Selectment liaisons to departments is blah, blah, blah. But that's not how you do it, and that's not how a board has done it ever, that I know.
Is it making any sense to have liaisons to departments in the first place?
Well, that's an interesting question. I didn't think so until a month or two ago, when a couple situations came up where we didn't really have a liaison for that part of town government, and I thought, as a default, maybe it is a good idea to have a catch-all. Things that we don't really deal with, yeah, maybe you ought to have that dealt with.
Isn't that a chance, though, for mischief, in that we're talking to departments directly?
Yeah. Well, it depends what you do, but I'll, I'll give you the example, it's, it's public now. Our DPW director has announced his retirement. You have three liaisons to DPW. If I wanted to involve the selectmen, you know, in the process, I can't involve all three of you, certainly, but if we had one for a department, that would have been the obvious choice, so. That's another example.
So, another set of meetings to add to your-
Yeah, exactly.
-eleven during the day.
Bob, if we have comments on, so are you going to go through all these and then we can?
I'm just going through my comments and then turn it over.
Because I'm, all right, I had something in that category, so.
If, if you'd rather do it at the time, I don't mind. It's up to John.
Do you have the word version of this, where we could actually-
I do.
So, if you could, we'll go through it today for your thoughts, but if you could distribute it with yours appended as one user, and then we can all do it as color-coordinated, maybe it'll be unreadable when we're done, but-
Okay. I think it's been well discussed tonight. Communication is a big issue for the board. Communication technology has changed drastically since any of your policies were written. We'll just leave it at that.
But I, I mean, but the thing is, what I would like to have happen here is that, in a really time-certain way, we come up with a Board of Selectment communication policy, like, quickly, because, I mean, it's, it's important, because there's a lot of communicating we have to do between now and April 3rd. And I would like to see us have something in place where we're going to, maybe it's not a full-scale policy, but it's just something that we can just bring to and say, "Okay, this is how we're going to do. We're going to have our own Board of Selectment Facebook page. We're going to do blah, 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 blah. These are the rules of engagement." Because I think that that is just critical for us to be able to communicate with folks between now and April 3rd.
As a stopgap, though, we could use, just as we use Bob as a single point of contact for, say, the webpage, we could use, Bob, feel free to disagree, use the town Facebook page as the single point of contact that we all direct our content through, in either an email or something like that.
Yeah, but I, I kind of like to, you know-
But to your point about April 3rd, that's not much time.
I know, but I also would like to see us with our own piece of communicate, our I know, but I also would like to see us with our own piece of communicate, our own way of communicating with people, whether that's augmenting that, or, or having a sub-page of it and having a way to put out material that informs and enlightens.
Communicating the position of the board to the public or individual members of the board?
No, not individual members of the board, the board, that's the whole point, is that we want to make sure that when we're speaking, we're speaking as a board and not someone, an individual.
Because there's plenty of that. And why is that coming, why is that coming to a head now, speaking as a board?
Absolutely. Because I think that there's going to be information that we're going to want to convey to the public.
But we, we could do that now, you're, you've got to separate medium from message, the medium exists today, if you're talking about messaging, we could certainly work on a messaging, give it to the town manager and post it, you'd have that very quickly.
Right, I think, I mean, I, I don't follow Facebook that much, but I think that it's very important for the board members when they post on Facebook, and it's hard, is, is to, to, when speaking as a private citizen, not from, we, we should never speak as a board on Facebook except to give information, you know, we have a meeting coming up.
You can't deliberate on, you can't deliberate on.
Let's go. Right. Yeah, or, and to give our, our, you know, I, I once made the mistake of indicating how I was going to vote on something, and I took it down within, you know, as quickly as someone called to my attention, so it's easy to do, but I, I think that if we could, if we could try in the meantime to keep our Facebook posts to, that have to do with the selectmen, to just informational.
I think that's entirely different, we're mixing apples and oranges, if we want to speak as a board to the public and convey a board position, that's fine, we can do that now, maybe you have a prettier page, maybe it's dedicated not to the municipal side, but to the Board of Selectmen, but that's, that's six of one happening or another, if you're talking about governing the way each of us conducts our, our behavior with our constituencies, or how we want to talk about it, do you want to visit a gas break and, and talk about it, or do you want to talk about fact-based stuff that's already in the past, it's already fixed, it's just a recitation of fact, that's a different animal.
Yeah, I, I think.
I don't think we should ever opine about what's going to happen, in the sense that it's a form of deliberation.
Correct. That's correct.
But you can certainly talk about what the past has already occurred, it's already existing somewhere else, you can summarize your thoughts, and as I said moments ago to Dimitri, you don't check your First Amendment rights at the door because you're a chair of order or a chair.
No, true, true, yeah. Well, at any rate, clearly we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I do agree with you that we've got an opportunity to give, we don't want to miss.
How does this subcommittee want to operate in terms of getting inputs from the others?
I suggest you go through me, honestly, it's just cleaner, just in case.
You got a lot of comments.
I think you always have to do that.
Yeah, and if you read your policy strictly, and Barry and I have talked about this, all of you and me break it all the time.
Yeah.
This is very centralized, go to the town manager, do not ever do anything else other than write a letter, and obviously, that's not the form of communication these days, so it, it really, this is a section of communication, it just needs to be thrown out, and I would rely on town council for some sort of best practice.
It says, write a letter, right, yeah, right.
Right, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that there's sort of two pieces here, there's a, there's a Board of Selectment communication policy, both through the public, you know, just, you know, prescriptive, and also kind of what we want to communicate as a message to the public, and then there's just the rest of the policies, right, it's like, how we're going to organize ourselves, so there's two kind of.
Don't you think that's part of this Section 1?
Yeah, but I'm saying, there's two, the separate and distinct pieces, and one is a communications policy.
Well, there's actually eight or nine separate pieces of it.
Yeah, I mean, you can carve up, you can decide, this thing is so important now, that this belongs all by itself, that's fine.
You, you don't have to have the same containers.
Right.
Yeah, the other principle that Bob touched on, whatever we end up with, it can't be so big, and so, one principle in life is if it's too big to, to do, it won't get done, and we could come up with the most elegant, well-written, well-crafted document that's 32 pages long, we'll attempt it this year, five or six years, it just is too, too weighty, too heavy, it won't be done, so we ought to pay attention to the heavyweight or the lightweight nature of it, and how easy it is to implement as well, just in terms of design.
I mean, the two pieces to me that just need immediate addressing are how we organize ourselves, so that's 1.1.1, and 1.1.2, and a communications policy, the rest of the stuff, I, I think, you know, could maybe wait another day, I, I just think those are the things that.
And the responsibilities.
And the role.
Yeah, I meant sort of the one, the one-one.
Right, 1-1-2, 1-1-2.
You know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
First page.
The last couple pieces, I, I think are town council issues, you have policies that talk about access to public records, honestly, I don't know that you need that table, and you have, you have nondiscrimination and ADA policies, I'm not sure you need those at all, those are well-spoken now in all kinds of laws. And that's, that's my sort of quick overview, most of this section of, of these policies needs work. So.
One of the things we're going to have to figure out is whether we take this and edit it, use this as a basis for what comes out of it, or do you use this as a baseline but craft a brand-new out of, use this as information, don't, it doesn't get discarded, but if you take a document and edit it, you end up with something that looks like you chopped up the wrong, wrong voices, that's old, that's new, you get, you have to go through that.
I mean, part of what I'm going to talk about and propose basically puts an X on this thing, so, I don't know, start a new page, Bob.
I don't have an opinion either one way or the other, it's just, I've done this two, both ways, and one way's harder, but you get a better product, the other way's easier, but, faster, but it's got limitations.
Just as long as, I mean, a lot of people that have gone before us, much smarter than me, I'm sure, put, put a lot of thought into this, and, and, and have, have had experience in this, so we don't want to lose any of that, but point well taken.
The essence of it, you'd keep, maybe the words, the expression.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so Bob will distribute, I guess, an MS Word version of this, you'll mark it up yourself, can you merge these?
I can either give you the copy I've marked up, or just a clean copy in Word, whichever you prefer, no magic about my thoughts, I just wanted to share them with you.
Yeah, you can, you can mark it up.
I'll send you both.
Yep.
Okay, the thought is rather than pen and pencil or PDF, or just do it in Word.
Yeah. I think an important question to solve early is, what's the mission here, if there's high priorities, get them done first, we're going to reformat the whole thing, let's, let's think of that.
Okay, all right.
Just, just a suggestion to the subcommittee, and based on years of experience, if a policy's been written and largely not followed, there's generally a reason the board didn't follow it, and if it's working out in general, you kind of want to hew more to what's been working, you can tinker around the edges on it, but.
Or you can make the policy work better.
Maybe.
That's the other option.
There's a concept, this philosophy called Chesterton's fence, you can look it up, if you see a fence and it's built, and you want to tear it down, figure out why the guy put it up, put it up, there's a reason, so there's, to Andy's point, there's value in some of it, we ought to figure that out, I have no trouble tearing down fences, but we ought to figure out why they're there.
Bob, I, I, not to put you in an uncomfortable position, but to put you in an uncomfortable position, I, I, I would imagine it's, you have essentially five different supervisors in a way, and, I, I would like your views on what you're looking for, and this goes to the, the responsibilities of the chair, whoever is sitting in the chair seat, how much communication do you want to have on a day-to-day basis about day-to-day issues with the chair and the board, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
I, I guess the one comment I, I will make is, is I'm different from my predecessor who dealt, generally speaking, with the chair, and I prefer to deal with the chair and the vice chair, always two selectmen, it comes close to violating open meeting law, but I, I always believed that two, two sets of eyes, if you will, and two sets of thoughts.
I agree with that.
As a board, coalesce better, and I like to bounce things off of only one person.
And, and, and do you, so I assume you get feedback, input from the chair and vice chair on operational issues or things like that?
And if there's, well, and if there's an issue, then I would change that construct and say liaison and chair, or liaison and vice chair, depending on the issue.
Right. Well, that's, that's fine, I, I just want to make sure that, that the two people report back to the entire board, so we all know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. I just, I just kind of want to lay out a concept here, this is, I thought about this since last April, actually, and felt that we were laboring under the duress of a town that kind of wondered what the Board of Selectmen was doing, a trust issue, and it dealt with, basically, for the last four years, not observing our policy, and, and if things go to form, and, you know, if, if this vice chair ascends to the chair next year, that'll be five years in a row where we don't do policy.
It's more than that, actually.
We can't let that happen.
Right.
I was going to bring that up earlier, but I agree for somebody else.
So, all the more reason now why I kind of talk about a proposal, so, I think the reason for not having a person serve as chair in the last year of their term, I think was clearly outlined in, in some of the public comment, the whole, the whole trust issue, the whole fairness issue, the whole, let's be above, let's, let's have governance above politics, and there's a reason why that was in there, there was a reason why that was in there, however, the reason why it wasn't followed is that it's unrealistic, this is a board where, a lot, where there's five smart people sitting up here, I served on the finance committee for seven years and dealt with seven years of budgets, so I felt I was pretty prepared day one to step into this chair and this role, however, there was a lot of stuff I didn't know, a lot of policy, a lot of things about what the board does, that I didn't do in my other roles at town meeting and finance, so, for example, on FinCom, at the time, I don't know if these guys still do it, someone gets appointed at FinCom, you get a book, it's a policy book, it's an onboarding process, it is.
Used to.
Used to, well, I guess, it worked, because it trained me, so, we don't have an onboarding process, we don't have a mentoring program, we don't have any kind of formal or informal way for a new member of the board to kind of get up to speed really quickly, part, part of the reason is because we're always going 100 miles an hour, but there's no kind of thing, so what I would recommend is, you know, that a new, and put this in the policy, that a new person elected to the board meets with the town manager for a certain period of time, will meet with the department heads, get a feel for what's going on, I felt prepared, Andy, you might have felt a little bit differently, you didn't have the FinCom, but there was no formal onboarding process for you, and no kind of, sort of way for you to sort of, you know, kind of get, you know, get involved, so, that's why it's unrealistic, because by the time you're ready to, to ascend to the chair, it's three years, so by the time you're ready to serve, this policy says you can't do it, because you're, you know, you're going to be running for reelection, so that's why I think it's unrealistic, so, what I'm going to propose strongly, and I want to put it out here, gentlemen, for you to think about, it'll do something that'll, that'll kind of, sort of have our parts one and two of the chairmanship stuff really be able to, to, to come to fruition, one is it's the annual rotation of the chair, basically, what we're saying is that it has to rotate, and two, not having the person serve in their final year, and what I'm going to propose is the concept of a co-chairs, not a chair and a vice chair, but co-chairs, it's that two equals, and what that does is that if someone is in their third year, and they are going to, if they decide to put their hat in the ring again to run for reelection, it's now balanced, it's not just one person setting the agenda, it's two, so that, it gives the public confidence that, why is this on the agenda, or how did this get published in Facebook, it, it kind of gets the, the whole concept, it, it puts people at ease, and I think develops a lot of trust, the other part of it is that it helps build capacity, right, if someone is going to assume the role of a co-chair, they can basically get up to speed faster, right, and, and, and not have to do it all on their own, so, I think that that's something that we should really think clearly about, because, again, to me, the, the sanctity of this board, and, and, and the reputation of this board is more important than any of the five souls sitting in the chair, and so for me, trust is the most important thing, and if we can set up a system where we're going to have a policy that's going to get followed, we're going to build capacity, and we're going to have people serve when they're ready, I think we solved a huge problem, so, I put that out there kind of as a.
Do you have an example of where co-chairs have worked on a board anywhere, here or elsewhere?
Do you want to have this, I don't know that we have time for this conversation, now we have a whole bunch of discussions.
Just put that right back to, come up with an example.
Right, no, I mean, I, I think on nonprofit boards, it happens all the time, and so, and, and so, there could be, you know, John does it one day, one week, Dan, you do it the next, then it switches, right, so, you know, there, there, there's the feeling that not one person is sort of running the show.
I think this needs a lot of work, I mean, I've served on probably a dozen nonprofit boards over the last 40 years, I've never seen that done, ever.
There's a co-chair of a nonprofit in this room as we speak, so.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that there is, I'm not saying, because I have experience, that it's not true, I think what it says, however, is that this needs a lot of work, and, you know, I think, you know, as important as this is, we've talked about going off into a subcommittee to go to work on this and bring a report back, I think we should do that, and we can start tomorrow if you want.
I just wanted to put this out, because I just think that, you know, we're going into an election season, we're going into a, a, a season where we're going to be asking people to dig into their pockets again, I think it's really, really important that we come up with something that says, this board is really thinking hard about building trust, and I think that what I just laid out obviously needs a little bit of work, I think is a solution toward that process, where we build capacity, and not one person is running, you know, is setting the agenda, so, it's out there, I'm sure, you know, people on social media are already kind of, you know, blowing it up, but that's something that I really want to see us move toward.
Before we move on, let me give you my thoughts, I think the implication that somehow this policy is responsible for the trust issues in the survey, it, it seems in disproportion, if you go back to the selectmen survey and you winnow through that, the trust issues were wide and far, and they dealt with it across the board, they've certainly been developed over more than last year, I think they've certainly been developed over a number of years, and they, they come from all corners of our, our residents, I think trust has, has more to do with how we comport ourselves up here, how we speak to the public with respect, listen first, to understand before being understood, and try to focus on transparency and clarity, get, get a clear message out, understand it, but also cut away the fog and explain clearly what the problem is, that's got more to do than what our policies, as, as already been pointed out, these are dust-covered documents in many cases that haven't been followed in years, I have to admit that for some of these, I was shocked to see that we're still dealing with pen and paper, and taxi cabs, and telephones, they don't comprehend anything that's been developed in the 21st century, they can't therefore have contributed to the trust issue, I do understand the way we behave is critical, it's on television every day, on RCTV, a new version of this comes up every week, but I don't accept the premise that somehow the construction of the board is root to a trust issue, it may contribute to it, but I think it's got more to do with how we conduct ourselves here as servants of the public and not as masters.
And how we comport ourselves and how we conduct ourselves is sometimes often based on how we are organized, and so.
Okay, well, let's have the conversation. Any other comments, Bob?
It's up to you, you folks.
Okay, I would suggest we get on the path of, Bob will distribute the package, as we have with other documents like this, it's tough to make sausage in public, mark it up, send it back, Bob will consolidate it, and in particular, Barry and, and John will deal with Section 1, if we go through the other sections, are there?
I would suggest that I'll, I'll circulate my version, if you will, and a clean version, and board members individually can communicate however best is comfortable for them back, including printing it out, marking it up, and giving it to me, if that's the easiest way.
So you can make a comment, even though you don't necessarily want to champion the review of it, it'll be incorporated in the review, maybe it makes sense for Bob to distribute a list of one through nine, indicate which ones you're interested in primarily.
Oh, for the whole policy, yes, I'll do that separately, I was just thinking on Article 1.
Yeah, for the whole policy. Yeah, but Article 1 specifically, mark it up, and Barry will incorporate it.
Okay. And I think what is most helpful from all of you is conceptual thoughts, not organizational, you know, documented thoughts.
Right, aspirational thoughts.
Yes, comments in the, in the margin, right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Right, John, are we going into budget now?
We have Article 3 license.
Resume hearing.
Oh, it's not over yet.
Thank you, Peter, okay, we have a hearing notice?
You just have to reopen it, I don't have to read it again.
Okay, come on. Let's see, we were posted to open a, reopen a hearing on the subject of Board of Selectment policies, Article 3, in our Thursday packages, or maybe it was actually sometime over the weekend, Bob distributed Article 3, hi everybody, good evening.
Good evening.
How do we want to go through this, Bob is marked up in the fashion that Article 1 was marked up, rough areas that either don't match with the way we comport ourselves, or which are out of date historically.
Yeah.
Bob?
I don't know what the board wishes to do, but you stepped through and reviewed quite exhaustively all the way up to entertainment licenses, and clearly you stopped there and did not finish, so, how you want to proceed is your own choice, but I just wanted to remind the board, that's where we stopped.
Thank you.
And that is Sections 3.7, I think, yeah, 3.7 is entertainment licenses, doesn't mean what you passed over can't be returned to.
We also had some feedback from the public on liquor licenses, differences between.
True.
Right?
True. So, what I'd suggest we do, just, just to get through, why don't we continue to pass through, and then we can double back on the subject of the alcohol licensing, does that make sense?
Yeah, just to talk briefly, was the alcohol noticed?
No.
So I don't believe the alcohol policy was noticed, so if the board is going to consider changing specifically ours, we would need to send public notice, you can obviously talk about it, but at a later date, you'll have to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
On a specific item, yeah.
On that one, I'd.
Right, on the liquor licensing, because it's not included in the.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the entertainment section, this looks like it's got quite a bit of surgery here.
Right, so the comments before was that we just had too much, and you wanted the policy to be more streamlined, so we consolidated them down a lot, and gave Bob's office and the town manager, you know, the discretion to really issue the licenses, if a denial is going to be issued, the individual will have the ability to come in front of the board and, you know, appeal and obtain a different decision if, if the board deems that necessary.
I had a question on fees, number two, that's just blank on purpose.
Yeah, so, we were waiting to see, I didn't know if we were going to incorporate fees into this policy, or you would, the board would like to have a separate document, fee schedule, it's sort of.
Fee schedule.
Gotcha. It seemed to be wiser to have it as a separate, you could edit it without changing the words.
Yeah, most communities do it that way, I just didn't know what the policy was here.
Would have a preference, I would, I would, prices change more frequently than words do, so.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds fine.
Any other comments on 3.7?
No, I, I like the way you've streamlined it.
Okay, 3.8 is.
I think that's the early opening, let me find it.
It's there.
Well, it's the three number.
It's the three number, yeah.
So, yeah, 3.8 was combined down into 3.7, so then all the numbers got changed.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So that's intact. And then what was 3.10 now, 3.9, no change, I just want to edit.
So, utilizing public sidewalks for outdoor dining, there were some minor changes to that policy that we made, and then Bob in our office was working with a license agreement that individuals that are utilizing that space, especially if they're going to serve alcohol in that space, would be, would be signing with the town.
And that was, that's under now 3.912, that information?
Correct, so the license agreement, which is spelt, spelled out in more detail in 3.96, will talk about the actual signing of the agreement, the whole harness agreement, the fact that it will be revocable, what type of insurance the town will be looking for, for individuals to utilize this space, and substantively, there really isn't a whole lot of change, so for community members, establishments that are already utilizing this policy, they shouldn't notice a, a difference, it's just, we're making sure they're signing these agreements, we're going to make sure they have the insurance, but in terms of whether they're eligible for this license, that hasn't changed.
This is only for public spaces.
Correct, yeah, if they want to set up in the sidewalk areas.
Okay, any comments from the board?
No.
Okay, keep going.
And so then 3. And so then three, ten, we made some minor adjustments. This was for A-frame sandwich board signs. Again, we wanted to make it clear that this was a license and not a lease, triggering different legal requirements. So, we were just cleaning up the policy to make sure that that was clear.
The license being one time, the lease being perpetuating, is that the thought?
So, under Mass General laws, if a town is going to lease property, it needs to get town meeting approval.
I see.
A license is revocable at will and you don't need to go to the town meeting. So, we just wanted to make that clear. But in terms of where signs can be located, the nature of how the sign looks, that sort of stuff is exactly the same as what's in your current policy brought up into compliance with your new sign by law.
And what was the, I noticed you, we took out applicants must be current on all municipal taxes, fees, et cetera.
So, the reason we took that out is because that was incorporated up above, I believe, in section three, one, one. And we found, felt like it was just duplicative to have it listed below. But even if that's not built into your license policy, those exact words, I believe you've adopted the bylaw, so.
I don't know. I don't think so, actually.
I saw that someplace else.
Yeah.
So, I think you're right, but higher up.
Okay, I can try to find that really fast. And we can talk about the bylaws as well.
I think it's really close to the beginning. Oh, here it is, three, one, one. It's one statement that an applicant has paid all taxes and fees and otherwise owes the town.
Right, so, yeah, it's still incorporated.
Yeah, great.
Any other comments?
The blanks, right there.
I was going to say, yeah, what is the suggestion for insurance? We never did hear back from Maya.
Oh, you didn't hear back from Maya?
Oh, okay.
So, Maya most likely is going to recommend the greatest amount of insurance possible, because that's typically what they do. So, one way to do it, because this is just talking about A-frames, this isn't for individuals utilizing the public walkway for dining, the risk might not be as great. And so, the board could give Bob the discretion to figure out what would be a commercially reasonable amount. And he could establish that that, or we can wait to hear back from Maya and continue.
Could we just subordinate to whatever policy they adopt? I mean, just reference their policy.
Maya's?
Yeah.
There may be some merit in waiting to hear what Maya says, because my guess is that they're going to have pretty high recommendations.
Put an A-frame in a public walkway.
Right.
They are going to put that number high.
Ten million.
Without question. And then they're going to require an umbrella on top of that. So, you know, to try to speculate on that number, I think, without guidance is folly.
Would you think these numbers are higher than a normal business liability policy would be written for? Would somebody actually be able to get a better policy?
You know, I would, I would suggest if you're comfortable taking out specificity in the policy, because insurance stuff changes all the time.
Yeah.
Say they just, say you have insurance.
You can delegate the authority to me or technically the assistant town managers in charge of this section. And we can be obviously required to report to you any changes.
That's fine.
So, you're suggesting not to put a number?
I'm suggesting that if you put a number, it's probably going to change more often than your policy needs to change generally.
So, can you just say having adequate insurance?
So, that's the term commercially reasonable amount. And that gives Bob the discretion. I mean, as town council, we would strongly advise that the town be named as an additional insured. That typically doesn't involve, involve a whole lot of additional fees.
Doesn't involve any fee.
So, you know, this is, again, this is just the A-frame, so we can definitely give, the board can give Bob the discretion. But we want some type of insurance guaranteed.
Well, if we're going to, if we were considering using Maya as a, you know, as a benchmark, we could state this to be the currently accepted recommendation by Maya as our, as our policy.
I thought you said that'd be too high.
I, I, look, when it comes to us protecting the town's liability, too high is, there is no such thing. And, you know, if they're, if they're using something, you know, that is commonly held across municipalities.
They're using it in the public way.
It strikes to me that that's where we ought to be. I mean, I'm not just trying to make it tough on people, because it's not my nature at all. However, I mean, it is my nature to protect the town. And I think that that's what this is about. And so, you got to get it right. I mean, what's adequate insurance to, you know, in one person's mind is wholly inadequate to someone else's, which is probably a totally different number from what a judgment is going to be. So, you know, I think if you use a benchmarking tool, you're better off.
What about language and conform with the requirements of the town's insurance company or something like that?
Did you say commercially reasonable insurance was the phrase of?
That, that is used frequently. You see that in lots of policies. That would be different than complying with the recommendations of Maya.
Have we ever for kicks and giggles just ever tried to price out one of these policies?
No.
Like, can you even get them?
It's a rider to their existing commercial policy.
It's a rider.
Probably doesn't cost one.
So, two choices exist. One is commercially reasonable and left up to the town manager, or we use what Maya recommend, recommends, or reference Maya, I guess. So, when it changes, this automatically changes. Preference of the board?
If we use them as a benchmarking tool, why not?
Nothing else, it's an independent standard that we can, it's not our judgment, it's not the town manager.
And I think to Barry's point, you know, this is on a sign, you know, which is a rider to an existing commercial property, commercial insurance product. My guess is the cost, we're not talking about, like, large amounts premium for these things. And, you know, what it does is it protects them and us. It's not just.
Someone's not going to chintz on your insurance, because, you know, someone.
Right.
So, that's why I just think if just commercially acceptable, you know, commercial.
No, I think we're going to point to Maya as the independent.
Will Maya always have a standard?
Maya will always give a recommendation.
What if we don't use Maya? We still want to use the recommendation?
Well, you could draft the policy saying. Oh, if you go self, if you go self-insured.
Yeah, well, anything, we pick a different insurance company.
Well, we could draft it so that no matter, we could say, like, whichever insurance provider the town is currently using. We don't have to specifically reference Maya.
Just because you don't want the policy tied to a vendor.
Another example of making it, you know, wedded.
Right.
Tied to a, you don't, a vendor, okay.
Right.
So, why don't we, I think these.
How about commercially determined as adjudicated by the town manager? You know, kind of based on what we're usually, what we're currently using, you know? We have a commercial policy.
So, I'm happy to sit here and edit. I'm good at that, especially in front of town meeting.
What did you say was up? As consistent with the town's.
The requirements of the town's insurance company, or some better word, way to say that.
The town is probably going to have different insurance levels than Maya would recommend that an individual with a license to utilize this space would, would need to have. So, I don't think we should phrase it to reference what the town is using, but what, whatever insurance provider the town currently utilizes, whatever their recommendation is.
For that.
That's one option. The other option is to just give Bob the discretion. And it seems like the board's leaning towards.
I think the two thoughts are discretion of the town manager, but reference an external source so that it's independent and rational for the town.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable.
All right. Keep going. So, the numbers will go filled in later.
Well, that doesn't let them vote on it tonight, though. That's the only issue.
Do you need words, Tom?
Recommendation of the town's insurance carrier?
They could vote on it with, with, subject to us coming up with language around that.
Okay.
Without us seeing the language that you come up with.
I think you could vote that way, if you wanted to. If not, you could definitely, you know, present the language back.
I'd like to check the box, Tommy.
Yeah. I don't know, I'd like to do the thorough work to make sure we get the language right, right? Got to have our policies right, we better have our policies right.
I'd like what Bob's written, what's, just to try to, are people comfortable with the way Bob's written?
Well, they were giving me some discretion.
The town's insurance carrier.
I think, I think Abria's going to come back with appropriate language, but that's.
She's working on it.
She's working on it right now. But even if she doesn't, she'll come, it's subject to our later acceptance of that.
So, the question is, does, does the amount of insurance that the individual will have, does it need to conform with the recommendation? Or are you giving Bob the discretion to make that decision? Or giving Bob the discretion? Okay.
So, the town manager shall consider.
Yeah.
Recommendation, the town manager consultation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Three, one.
That's it.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right.
The keynote's for another day.
Keynote was already approved, I believe.
Remember, you should ask for comments from the.
All right, I'm sorry, any comments on the public regards policies reviewed here tonight? Any other comments?
Article three.
Article three? Yeah, all right. Thank you, Dan.
Do we have a motion?
Hang on a sec.
I'm good. Move to close the hearing on Article Three of the Board of Selectment Policies.
They can close it.
Bob?
We just want to make sure you don't do anything we don't think you're ready for.
And we're able to have the discussion on alcohol policy even if this topic is closed today?
Was it posted?
It was another.
It wasn't posted, it was posted for another hearing.
Originally, it was posted as Article Three, Board of Selectment Policy, Article Three licenses.
So, was it in or out?
Well, it's, so it's in that, but it's never been presented to you as a topic.
So, it stands the way it is.
And in fact, your description of it has been, this section has been omitted, because it's already.
So, we want to change comments for the public tonight and they cause us to change our.
I don't see any harm in having a discussion tonight. The question would be whether you can make changes tonight.
Right, I don't think you can make.
I think it'd be safer not to make changes tonight.
But if we, if at the end of discussion, changes were desired.
Have another here.
All right. Okay, so, so we can close this safely then. True?
True, you'll just vote subject to the, like, the small changes we talked about, one, including language about the fee schedule.
As amended.
As amended.
All right. Dan, do you have a motion?
I did it already. Close, move to close the hearing on Article Three.
Thank you. Barry seconds, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Five, zero. Any comments from the public on the subject of alcohol policy? Yes?
Yeah, thank you.
Why don't you stand up, let us know who you are, where you live?
Nick Renano, I live on Barb Street. Thirty-six years, been a homeowner here in Reddick. And appreciate the time tonight. And I know we discussed for a few minutes at the last meeting a little bit on the alcohol policy and I shared a document with some generic language. So, I appreciate the time tonight to try to revisit that. Going through the policy, what I see is some inconsistencies in the language, or the restrictions, rather. The policy as it's currently written has licenses for restaurants and licenses for clubs. And we have lots of restaurants, hopefully more. And we have lots of clubs, but only like we four currently have alcohol licenses. So, I did a little more research on this and one of the things, based on one of the comments made at the last meeting, did some more research on this. And there is a special, there is a separate license for war veterans clubs. And I don't know why the town does not use that as a license for. I believe, I believe two of the clubs qualify for that.
We just went through this on the alcohol policy and we added a number of other categories that we historically haven't had, but the state allows. But I don't recall one on, what'd you say, war veterans?
War veterans clubs.
You know about that?
Yeah, so it's a part of, I think, it's a part of a, it's a type of club license? Is that what you're referring to?
It's, it's under the ABCC.
So, there's multiple different types of club licenses, as with restaurants. So, you know, it's, it's one of the various types. It's a subtype, right, so there are.
Actually, it's not a subtype. It's, it's, it's Mass General laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve. War veterans clubs is one of six different types of alcohol licenses.
Right.
War veterans club, any corporation, the members in which are war veterans, which owns, hires, or leases in such city or town, a building or space in a building for the use and accommodation of a post of any war veterans organization incorporating the Congress of the United States.
Right, so it is, it is a club license. There's a couple of different types of club licenses, and war veterans is one type of club license. So, it does have some regulatory requirements that are different than other types of club licenses. I'm not sure if the town has issued them to the war veterans clubs.
So, the reason they're written up is because of the comments made. Right now, whether everybody's lumped into one bucket for clubs, it's, makes it somewhat hard to maybe appropriately apply reasonable restrictions or policy language. Because you don't want to, you know, affect or overburden one type of club versus another type of club. So, if the town did employ a war veterans club alcohol license, then that basically addresses, I think, so two of the clubs in town. And then the other two can be addressed as clubs. And that gives the board the freedom to put in appropriate restrictions for the different types of clubs.
Abria, is, should I, do I understand this, that the subtype, or the war veterans club is meant so that you can distinguish between types of clubs within the class, rather than having a single umbrella for all?
Right, so the way that the ABCC will get it is, it's a club license. And then they give out war veterans club licenses.
So, if we wanted to distinguish, we could use that if we chose.
I believe you could. I'd, I'd like to look back at your specific liquor license policy and look at the regulations governing war clubs. Also, I'm not, I'd like to confirm whether the clubs, the war veterans clubs here, do actually have a war veteran license? Because the, only where you would.
I don't think that we do. I, we, we just redid this last year.
You mean a license to be a war veterans club?
No, so the way that it would look on their actual license, it would say, club dash war veteran.
So, they would have to have applied separately.
No, they would still apply for a club. There's no application that's different. They still apply for a club. The ABCC does, I can say.
So, even without this regulation in our bylaws, they would still get that designation from ABCC?
Right, possibly. So, I'd like to look. And the biggest difference between war veterans club licenses is that it doesn't count towards your quota. So, that's, it doesn't count towards your quota. So, that's the biggest thing, and so that's all done, you know, from the ABCC side.
Kind of way to extend.
Exactly, it was a way to say, we want war veterans clubs to be able to operate if we understand the limitations that municipalities have with their quota. So, these are taken out of your quota.
So, when we, when we corresponded with the state and the ABCC recently.
Correct.
Within the last year, wouldn't they have alerted us to that? Because there was a big discussion about.
How many we had.
What we really had, how many we had, what kind we had.
But that was just restaurants, though, I thought.
What's that? No, that was.
Was it everything?
I think it was every, it was every.
Would it, would it be true that unless the town called out something, they may issue something that has a name, but it doesn't matter, because we haven't asked for different treatment? So, if they, if they issued it with a dash war veterans.
Generally, the ABCC is pretty good about doing it themselves.
Then I would say that's not how they're issued, because they have a very specific quota for us and it's very detailed. And the club license or counter is club licenses.
Okay.
I don't know what the license document physically said.
We should take a look, yeah, we should take a look.
What's the materiality of whether the license is issued as just a straight club or a war veterans club as it relates to enforcement hours, all that, with our current set of laws? What's different?
With your, with the laws or with the policy?
The policy, sorry.
So, the policy just treats all clubs the same. There's no difference in terms of hours.
Until we made them different, it would be no difference, I see, until our policy made a distinction.
Correct.
And the reason you brought it up was so that we could create them.
And your, your, your point, you're raising this, again, what reason?
Well, because the, the current policy, and I'm kind of in the other place, so when you say quotas, I have no idea what you're talking about.
So, you're only given so many alcohol licenses to dispense. It's a number we can, it's a cap.
Okay.
So, that's your quota.
All right, so the issue is, as I read through the alcohol policy, was, as it's written, it is no distinction. A club is a club is a club. And it's no distinction as to whether it's a veterans' club that might be, might be limited in its ability to service their number similar to a club that has maybe all kinds of resources or a restaurant. But, so that's one thing, is the difference between the restrictions that are applied to restaurants versus the restrictions applied to clubs. It seem to be very different and fairly lax on the club side versus the restaurant side. Whether it's the requirement to make food available when alcohol is served and consumed, or the number of hours that a club can operate versus a restaurant. If the clubs, generally, if you're across the board, right now it's eight AM to two AM. The policy as it's written has no distinction where any establishment, restaurant, or club may be located. It's implied that it's, they're all in business areas, but that's not the case. So, if a club or restaurant happens to be operating in its own residential area, one would think there would be some additional restrictions to balance the expectations and needs of the residents versus whatever club might be operating in the area. So, those were kind of the major discrepancies that I, that I saw. The other, the other thing, too, from a historical standpoint, and I don't know if, how much information is kept in the archives for the town already, but I know. but I know Caitlin assisted me a little bit, we pulled some licenses just to look at what was allowed, not allowed. And historically, the town, as I understand it, it could be wrong, but the licenses for clubs have always been restricted to indoors only. The licenses that, you know, we can see back to nineteen seventy. So consistently, the town's always restricted them to indoors. That changed for one club about eight or nine years ago.
When you say restricted, is it in the black letter text, or was it a separate, I should know this, but is it an addendum to the boilerplate?
I, you know, I didn't actually, do you remember?
I think it was in the black, under, it's like on, in this, indoors. It's in the black text underneath the...
Changed for all clubs at the same time?
I don't know what it changed.
Not when, but it changed for all at the same time? That, that restriction was lifted for all?
No, no, as I understand it, and I don't have the licenses with me, but three of the clubs are still restricted indoors only.
Okay.
And then one was changed about eight years ago. And, and again, because there's nothing in the policy of business area, business area versus residential area. We certainly have outdoor alcohol services, just talked about with restaurants. Understandably, through the business areas, but now we have establishment in a residential area serving and consuming outdoors in the midst of the neighborhood, different, different story. And, and so it's not clear why, it's not clear why maybe that was lifted, or the assumption is the town always restricted it to indoors because it wasn't a residential area.
Okay. I believe all of the club licenses have been let this year, so any changes that would occur, if were any, wouldn't occur till December of eighteen. What's the board's will in terms of opening another hearing to entertain any of the comments that we've already heard?
Very willing.
Yeah, willing. I think we should respond, you know, after the summer, probably.
That's a, that's a when, not an if.
I'm just saying, yes, but like...
Your yes.
Not now, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, not now, but before licensing season.
Between now and December of eighteen?
We should always be open to a discussion. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with being open to a discussion. Time, I mean, licenses are all now renewed through December of this year, so, you know,
Plenty of time.
We have plenty of time, and we do have an incredible agenda packed over the course of the next couple of months.
Yeah, not, not, not until we're through the budget.
Okay, and I can work with Bob and Caitlin. I'm, I thought war licenses, war, club licenses, war licenses. I thought they were excluded from the quota, so I'll confirm that.
We shouldn't issue those war licenses.
Yeah, war licenses.
You can't be a war if you don't have a license.
Yeah. But I think, but I...
This could be revoked at any time.
In our defense, I think the reason that the club licenses was eight to two, in my mind, I had this image of, of it being a war, a veterans', a veterans license. We're going to screw this up.
Right, we are.
Because in that sense, they've got a bit more flexibility. Maybe they come in the morning, maybe they, you know, it's not a, open to the public, but I guess it is open to the public, but it's primarily that demographic that's, that's coming.
Yeah, so that club licenses are not, those establishments that hold club licenses are not supposed to be open to the club, like? Only, only people that are visiting are club members or guests, or guests of...
But if you're a war veterans' club member, presumably you are either one of or connected to, so you give a little bit more flexibility there.
Well, it's going to give us time to find out their real statuses and so forth.
I also suggest where there's such a small number of these, that we ought to engage in discussion with them. We being town staff, police, but certainly you're welcome to do it, too.
Well, this floor, this floor.
They may have no opinion on this, they may have a strong opinion on this, I wouldn't know.
Yeah. Good. Okay, so sometime after May, if you can get into this?
You have another public comment?
Other public comments, yes.
He's named Lindsey Baker, and I just came tonight to show my support for the points that Nick made. But I also had some concerns.
Where do you live, where do you live, Lindsey?
I live on Grom Street.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate to show your knowledge of that discussion?
Sure.
Well, I live on Grom Street, and I am concerned for the fact that alcohol served, or is able to, is served from eight AM to two AM, that food does not have to be served in time. It's a social club at the end of my road, and, I mean, it's an athletic club, but socializing happens, social drinking is part of the culture. And, you know, I have two small kids, I see tons of people recreating on that road, going down to Tom Forest. And I'm just concerned for safety, and I'm also concerned for the peace of the neighborhood. I mean, I think all residential areas in Redding deserve the same chance at peaceful environment, and so that is a concern for me. It becomes quite noisy, because people are, you know, envying and having a good time, and they don't want to begrudge anyone now, and they're, you know, leave your time, but, so we live there, and so it's kind of a tricky area, and I'm sure that will come up in the discussion going forward. And I'm grateful that you're open to doing that, but I just wanted to voice that to me as well.
So just to be clear, the discussion we're proposing to have is a review of the alcohol policy only? You're, you're talking about other issues like traffic and hours of operation?
Well, I'm concerned about safety, too.
Right.
Like people, people, social drinking and then driving down the road.
Right, but it's beyond alcohol policy. It's a little bit...
Well, I think the federal, the federal.
Enforcement part, but I get it.
Yeah.
We'll have that review most likely at, sometime after May. We've got a pre-pact agenda the next three months. We'll notice the butters, let you know. Make sure you sign in tonight so that you have a chance to get a call back. You can speak again and give us your thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And before we close this, Bob, just, I mean, there, there are three or four clubs. It might be very helpful before we actually come to a hearing, if staff can talk to the different club managers and stakeholders involved, just to kind of, just to see where, you know, where the boundaries of this thing are right now, you know, so that, you know, we get some, some information.
Yeah, that goes without saying, I think.
Any other comments from the board or the public?
Just the status here. We closed the hearing, but we did not take the vote approving Article three. Shall we move to that?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Selectment accept changes to the Board of Selectment policies in regard to Article three licenses as amended.
Second. Motion, Barry seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
It's a five-minute recess.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess? We'll stand and recess until...
Our last formal topic of tonight would be a review of the town manager's budget. Behind Bob is a section of the summary that we'll go through. All of us have been given copies of the document earlier last week and we'll each give our responses as we go through each section. So Bob, I think the easiest way to go through it is just flash through this and then take inputs from the group as appropriate.
Okay, I agree. This is not a sort of bottom-up presentation. This board has already seen all that. This is just the results of all those presentations. Simply put, on the first page, I was tasked with making a million and a half dollar cuts from what was presented in December and I've done that. Both the town and the schools, if you will, have a two and a half percent operating budget. It so happens that the town's total budget is the same. Our accommodated costs are going up about two and a half percent. I thought in terms of comparing departments right away that it was instructive to remind the board and anyone else that's reading this of what happened in FY '18, the current fiscal year. Because the town specifically went out and did some things that were described as one-time costs, so money was put in certain areas to do that and then taken away. So if you will, the two-year picture is, if you will, a little bit fairer. A one and a half percent budget, the current year, two and a half, next year, two percent total. And you can see, looking at the departments, most of them are wandering around two percent. A little higher in the town facilities budget, but the rest, not much different. I didn't do the math, but proportionately, the cuts were made as I thought they should be and I didn't try to target any kind of rate of growth for any department. I really took them bottom up, if you will. There was a time we didn't do that. We tried to give everyone the same increase. Those days are long overs. You can see the cuts here. Finance being the smallest cut because quite frankly, she asked for the least thing. She asked for one thing. And she didn't get it as she knew she would. There was a couple of discussion points about FTEs, so I reproduced the December chart and just updated it for the town manager's budget.
Well, my only note there is you have an asterisk on the titles and it's not referenced, but that means?
Well, yeah. I think the asterisk referenced that it was the town manager's math of thirty-seven and a half hour equivalents.
Okay, alright. Well, this is going to travel, so.
Yeah. Well, this is just a draft for tonight.
Exactly.
This is not what's going to FinCom, so.
Yeah.
But then, thank you, that's a good point. So, you know, depending on your starting point, eighteen-ish positions were cut out of the twenty that were increased in the December requests. And I'll describe quickly the additions. It's largely clerical. This is sort of the more traditional look at what the budget looks like. And this is the increases for each department. The reason there are some italics is simply what town meeting does or does not vote, so it's not important. But there's the two and a half percent increase, if you will. I expect we're going to spend most of the record time on discussion and questions and answers, but I just want to reiterate a couple of points. Bob has brought to my attention that my pillars came out as killers in translation, so they are pillars of society, not killers of society. I want to make sure that's correct.
Actually, it could be the same.
It could be.
The ballards, yes.
Yes, right.
Okay.
I want to kind of restate that while I said, and I think the board agreed, that risk is now a much more important consideration than services. Obviously, we're a services organization and what the customer wants is service. You saw a good example of that tonight. They don't necessarily want to hear the story or the reason, they just want the good service. And I totally understand that, and that's why we're here. But that is becoming an increasing challenge. I am very concerned, as I know the board is, about public safety staffing. That's something we've, you know, held in abeyance as a comment for many years. Would it have been better to ask for additional public safety staffing for the last five to seven years and then not do it and raise the concern in the community? Maybe. I don't know. That's, you know, that's looking backwards. Would it have been better to fund public safety staffing and get rid of something else? Again, maybe. But I'll tip my cap to the public safety staff, both police and fire, that until we brought this discussion to you last fall, there was much less awareness of it, meaning they're doing a good job. Just because they're understaffed compared to the peers, the results are good. Both the chiefs and I and their staffs are concerned that that may not be sustainable.
Well, you know, Bob, the awareness was, has been present. We haven't had a catastrophe.
Right.
Is really what we're saying.
I mean, he's fine till it's not fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like what we heard this evening, you know? I mean, everything's great till I don't have any heat and, you know, and I really get that.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
And I want it to be warm in my house. Well, you know.
You know.
The same thing is true for public safety.
We experienced as a group, if you will, a different kind of disaster or emergency this weekend. Usually, it's a geographic one. There's a power outage, there's a storm, we can see it, we know about it. Here, you can't visibly see. Well, who's out of gas? When I was out there, I had neighbors approaching me saying, "What's going on?"
Yeah.
So it was kind of a difficult thing to assess for that reason, is that it's a sporadic problem that's not visually obvious.
But this public safety thing, we have known about. I mean, we've, you know, we've had two police chiefs over the course of the last handful of years reporting to us their situation.
Yeah.
And it's going in the wrong direction each year with the addition.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's, it probably needed a little more discussion maybe at the time, but clearly, the start was Walkers Brook Development. No police were added, police or fire.
True.
Yeah, and I think, Bob, you just laid it out one of those nights in December.
Yeah.
It's, you know, the chiefs will tell you, it'll swear up and down, they'll make it work, right?
Right.
They have.
Yeah, and they absolutely will.
But your point is, at what level of risk are we willing to live with?
Right.
My mind is that, you know, we've surpassed that a few years ago.
Yeah.
So, you know.
And.
That's really the discussion and the decision.
The only staffing I was really comfortable doing, frankly, was to add a shared clerk between both departments, which kind of seems like a finger in the dyke. But to the extent we can get the uniformed police and fire away from a desk and out in the public, it's a helpful thing.
It's that much more.
So it's a very low-cost but high-impact item, yeah.
Bob, in the paragraph on the screen, you say, second paragraph, third line, at the very end, "I believe we will need," did you mean "I will need" or "we will need," or would you strengthen that to say, "I believe we must"?
You know, it's so hard to project forward, but if this is next year and we're all sitting here, my opinion is, we need to fund two of the three positions I was not willing to do this year by eliminating two or three or more other positions.
Correct.
In the organization. So that's what I'm making very clear. And I've made that very clear. All the department heads know that, they understand that.
I get it. This document's going to travel to other eyes. It won't have Bob behind explaining what he meant.
Okay.
I don't know if you care to strengthen the language here and there.
Again, for the final budget going to FinCom, absolutely.
When you say three, three between police and fire.
Between police and fire. Probably two police, one fire, right now. My second concern was the town accountant's issues. And that's, again, a little bit of a less visible thing, but I think the board is highly aware of the financial risk and how important finance is to the rest of the organization. To the extent you have a single point of failure problem, she is in, purely.
Yeah. It doesn't really matter who's there. When you have a single point of failure, that's a risk that you should not absorb.
She has an assistant department head. The assistant department head, he's a great guy, he's going to grow into some of that job. What's our juggling act? What are we willing to live with in terms of what he can inherit and what someone else can hire? There are some options, but I do believe that just funding a position, which I was not able to do, is important. What she chooses to do and how she does it may not be clear yet because she has some internal options, part-time people that may want to work full-time, and if they would, they'd be my first choice. So just so you know that there's some options, but there's a shortfall.
It's not only a single point of failure, it's probably if you wanted to put a stake in the heart of the organization and you take that individual out, you've just grown to a halt.
Yeah, and in the last twelve months or fifteen months, she did proportionally more work in the school department because the staff turnover that she doesn't have to do going forward, we hope.
Right, right.
And she's aware of that, but she's still exhausted from it, quite honestly.
And having an assistant town accountant will not only be a backup, but also someone that will pick up her institutional knowledge, moving, you know, down the road.
Yeah, and it's important. It's, you know, it's proverbial Wall Street term is the Chinese wall. There's things the town accountant does that I shouldn't do and that other people shouldn't do. And there's things the Board of Assessors should do that no one else should do. We do our best to honor the spirit of that. We don't have the staff. We have to share, we have to overlap. I do things that are legally okay but a little gray. I get involved more in revenue projections because she just doesn't have the time. She's always the final word. But there's things that we're doing that aren't honoring the spirit, if you will, of the division of duties. And she needs to be more separate from the organization than she's allowed to be.
Would one individual satisfy?
I think so, yeah, I do.
Well, she, that's what she kind of said too when she was there.
Yeah.
I just need more.
Yeah. I don't feel obliged to really go into the details of this, but I'd certainly welcome the board's questions and we'll go department at a time, I think is probably the best place. I do want to just point out, I did list all the cuts I made by dollars, by line item, just so you'd see them, and explained whether they're a wage or expense. And I did then prioritize that list. And anything else that was not on the list, I felt was worth mentioning, but I did leave out one category that I wanted to discuss with you. And that's something that is funded next year but is not funded after that. Our CASA front and center.
Yeah, I noticed it was.
So I didn't want to bring that up other than through discussion because, you know, if, for instance, you're going to propose having an override and you're going to list things, we don't need our CASA in the first year. So that's a communication challenge, I'll say. And, you know, how we approach it, how much we ask to fund our CASA is a discussion point. But I will tell you, and John Dougherty and I and the chief have worked on this, the town absolutely does not have the resources to find one hundred and twenty-five or one hundred and fifty thousand out of the sky without an override and say, "Oh yeah, we're fine." It's up to the schools as to whether they'd share and whether they'd bring that in as an accommodated cost. That's a future discussion, but it's an important discussion that we largely have to have as to with and without an override, what's the future of our CASA.
At the moment, our CASA.
And I'm on the board of our CASA, so I share that just to make sure you know that, as is the police chief and the superintendent of schools. So we're not necessarily independent in the sense that we have an obligation to our CASA and obviously believe.
Right, but you're on the board of our CASA because of its importance.
Right.
So that's, shouldn't be.
So I just wanted to mention that I'm not on the list on purpose, you know, not by purpose.
If we're putting to accommodated costs, it would be split as everything else is.
Yeah, it would be, you know, we've each used that method for things in the past. They've had some social services added. We've had, I want to say it was additional hours for our CASA, and I'm trying to remember if that's how we got the SRO. I think that's how we put the school resource officer in the budget.
That was a community priority.
Yeah. So that comes in, if you will, and is taken as revenue off the top, wherever it goes, whether it's in the school budget or in the town budget.
As a community priority.
Yes, yep. So that's the most obvious way, given our, you know, framework of how it would be done, but it's a discussion.
It's still an additional cost that's not funded.
Right.
So whether it's included in the, you know, in the override, even though it won't be used for the first year.
Right.
It's, you know, it's still, I think it was a.
Yeah, and as a board, and I certainly learned, you know, we were too clever by half last time. We explained more than needed to be explained. So that's why I didn't want to start complicating the issue. How do we want to discuss this and how do we want to present this? You know, and that's an open question still.
Do I recall right that in, is it nine years our CASA's been around? It's been grant-funded in part or whole for the.
It's probably ten, and they've been grant-funded for all but a portion of one year, maybe a whole year.
But we've had to contribute a little as we've done, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's.
In the middle of two five-year grants, the town paid a certain.
Our luck is not going to hold out at some point.
It's legally done. Ten years is the maximum.
There may be no more.
Right.
Unless they find another source that hasn't been recognized yet.
And they could find sources for subsections of the work, but they won't find it for who and what.
There's not a master funding mechanism like the ones that have been used.
What discussion would have to happen to make it an accommodated cost? Would it be school committee? Would it be John himself? How would that happen? I don't recall ever having to do this.
In the past, certainly I meet with the superintendent and whatever relevant staff we each have. In the case of the school resource officer, that would have been Chief Cormier. And just discussed, look, you know, do we want a school resource officer? Where would it be? Who would pay for it? And so on. And then just bring it forward to both committees.
Okay.
We'll just select them in the school committee and ultimately, ultimately, it's town meeting, but finance committee is a very important step along the way. And then, as the board requested, I listed a priority, you know, again, without our CASA. And I listed wages, they each, you know, in the case of police and fire, have a uniform expense. I have assumed twenty-five percent benefits. John and I have discussed that's a reasonable approach. And then I've given an estimate, and it is an estimate based on the last tax classification of what it would cost for an average household for each of these things.
So a five-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-dollar home.
Right.
With the corresponding taxes.
Right.
Would pay thirteen dollars for one police officer.
Correct.
And I think this is exactly, I want to just compliment you on this particular graphic. I think this is exactly what people want to see. They want to understand what you're proposing as the highest priorities in descending order and what it's going to cost. I, you know, I think that, I think people are much more inclined to be willing to open their tax purse when they know what they're getting.
And so for those at home watching, what the town manager's done is actually for each of the thirty prioritized items, highest to lowest, he has for that, each line item, identified for that average home, as John says, what the incremental burden would be to, in an override, for that line. So it's essentially broken out in the most atomic form that's possible.
And I think that those are, those represent every cut you've made. As I, when I reviewed this, I thought that this list matched the cuts that you made from the requests that were, you know, brought to us last month from your department.
With two exceptions that hopefully show up in bold behind me.
Yeah.
That were not requested, but I think they're important. And I didn't want to micromanage and make someone request it, but.
No, you're, these are things that you've plugged on as a town manager.
And our CASA would be another example.
Yeah, but because that's not.
Right.
This year, you're simplifying it by, you know.
Keep it simple. You know, I showed you the list of cuts. You can see there's no five-thousand-dollar adds. I kind of kept to the bigger things. So if we cut technology from twenty-five to twenty thousand, that's not going to go into an override discussion.
Right.
I just left that out.
The numbers match pretty closely though.
And how you carry this forward, Barry raised a really important point today. You know, if the board's going to continue and have a discussion about an override, as you all know, the language of an override can be restrictor for the first year to some degree.
Right.
Now, I would want some legal advice on this, but I assume in this construct, if, let's say you draw the line wherever you do, that you just, you don't list how many police officers, you just say public safety and so on and so forth. If you list dollar amounts, like, one override we had in the past did list dollar amounts for specific things. One of them was roads. I forget the dollar figure, two-hundred thousand for roads. Whatever the town may choose to do, first of all, it obviously can't handcuff the schools by education reform other than for the schools. You can't go deeper than that. But in the town, you can.
Yes.
But legally, that is only going to hold for the first year.
Right.
If an override passes, it's important to know that. And when the board had this discussion fifteen, eighteen months ago, you have to be really careful how specific you are because it removes your flexibility in that first year.
What did you mean when you said public safety?
If you agreed that the top three things are what should be in an override, I would not suggest saying for two police officers and a firefighter, I would just suggest for public safety.
Well, there's actually the first five, but.
Yeah.
Who's counting?
Right.
And to the point of trust, which we've heard a lot of tonight, one of the reasons we heard that the 2016 override suffered, the fate it did, was folks did not trust or did not understand. So for those watching tonight, one of the additional improvements we've tried to make is to give folks full disclosure of where, prioritized list of where dollars, if approved, would be spent and the order they would be spent on. And the plan, at least from the town side, would be to have a discussion and decide which of those or all of those would be supported on the town side. Again, our limit on the school side is simply to talk about a budget line, but on this town side, we have the flexibility. And that's an attempt to give you, the voter and the resident, an understanding of exactly how we're thinking and exactly where those dollars will go. I can't tell you what will happen in five years and circumstances may change, but this is how we're going to build and justify an override, certainly the discussion on it on the town side.
I mean, my feeling is, is that the override question should be extremely simple. Whatever number we've come up, based on our discussion of this and listening to our friends on the, on the school committee, the override is, you know, will the town approve an override of X dollars for, you know, for general government and education?
For the operation of the town and the schools.
And then there is a addendum, that's not part of the question, that basically is the fruits of our discussion about this is how we prioritize it. I don't think the question should be forty-seven things long.
No, no. The question is always in the form you described. It's one.
It doesn't have to be. It can be a list.
I, you know, I actually take issue with that. I think if we want to get an override passed, then we sorely need one. And I think, I know we need one here.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that our, that our brothers and sisters on the school committee feel exactly the same way. It's my belief that if this is what we need and this is a priority order that we generally agree with, telling people what they're going to get for what they're paying is highly appropriate. And it's, and if you look to other towns, it's not unusual in towns that frequently use overrides to fund things, they're very specific about what they're spending. They, they need a fire truck. Please give me a fire truck. It's right on the ballot. And it's, whatever it is, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And I would suggest that, you know, especially when I reflect on what I read, you know, over a four or five-hour period in those comments.
You're a fast reader.
I would suggest that this is exactly what people are looking for, who are, who voted no but might vote yes, you know, if they were so inclined to feel like they were getting their money's worth.
Bob, what would the question read like if it were a, would it literally be a cut and paste to this with some, or some reading?
Well, again, I would suggest it go by town meeting votes, so I'd say public safety as a group.
So line items.
I think so. And I don't know that you need the specificity of wages versus expenses as opposed to for the whole department. I think that's the simplest thing to understand. Now, I remember when Melrose did one approximately the same time as us, I don't remember the exact wording, but it was two police officers and blah, 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 whatever the other things were. Most of it was education, so it was more general. We could do that. We could say for X number of police officers, X number of firefighters.
Right. Absolutely. Teachers, et cetera.
No, I.
I mean, if you look at those top ten, nine of the top ten are public safety people.
Because at the end of the day, all this is, is a side letter to the vote. It's not binding.
Well, it's.
You're winding in your vote.
The voters, when the voters vote, it'll be a block of money that represents this and other items, but it does not explicitly direct the spending. And my take on a lot of those comments was, the voters really wanted to do that direction. They wanted to have that say.
They wanted to steer it.
They wanted to steer it.
My understanding is, you know, a balanced budget will be presented to finance committee on February first. I have to do that. It will not include anything on this list and many things on the school's list. If an override passes with specificity, my understanding is town meeting is obliged to include those thoughts in their vote.
Yes.
Now, that doesn't mean they have to agree with the balanced budget that was submitted.
Correct.
They could change that, so it's kind of nuanced.
Yeah.
And again, that's binding in year one. So for instance, what, again, what happened thirteen, fourteen years ago, and I don't remember the dollar figure, but I think it was about two-hundred thousand, you know, and two-hundred thousand for the paving of roads. So the town meeting was obliged to put that in a specific line item that first year. And there was a moral obligation presented and it was always followed and increased, that that would be increased by two and a half percent a year.
In perpetuity.
Much better, yeah.
So how would you deal with our CASA, which is spending zero money a year?
That's why I didn't put it on the list yet.
So that, I mean.
Yeah, it's a discussion.
We decide that that's something we want to fund.
What do you come back with it?
One way you might do it is in year zero, do nothing. In year two, maybe it's a topic of free cash, and you deal with it in year three, because the world's going to be different then.
Yeah. I don't have a, you know, it's not as nice and easy as this list. Now, we could ask for it in the first year and be disingenuous. I don't agree with that, but you could. And then you'd have an extra one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, but then if, let's say you don't do that because that's disingenuous, then how do you explain to the voter what you're asking for? I will tell you that there are things presented in the budget that I believe, and I know John has a similar belief, I won't speak for him, just because it's not on a list doesn't mean we can't figure out a way to add some things in the future. We all manage our costs and things work out okay. It's not to say that this thing will never happen unless the voters put it in there.
I mean, that's my concern too about just sort of being uber-specific.
Yeah.
Is that you wind up doing, you know, budget by referendum, which is never a good idea. And it actually ties your hands to basically solve all the problems. I'm not saying, just, not to be specific, but, you know, there are ways that, you know, things are, the world is going to change.
It is, but these are our highest priority problems. Would you agree? Would you not agree?
I might change the order a little bit, but, yeah.
You're wiggling around a little, you're not making big changes.
No, these are things, you know, they're, listen, we could put a list of thirty-seven. No, these are things, you know, they're, listen, I, we could put a list of thirty-seven in here, you know, but it's, yeah, these are the things that need to get addressed. Absolutely.
Bob, back to your story about roads. So in that case, roads mapped to, was it ninety-nine on the budget? What does line for roads in?
Yeah, it was in the capital plan. I don't remember.
Okay, so it matches to that.
Yeah.
You'd lump these into public safety. That would tie to the public safety line in the budget.
I think so.
I have your answer. Two thousand three, there was a general override, and then there were debt exclusions, one for RMHS debt exclusion, new school debt exclusion for question two, sidewalks are question three, I think. Question three failed.
What was the gen, the wording of the general? Do you have?
I don't have the wording.
Okay, I can find it.
Yeah.
Bob, so to, to, to clarify what I think you said, in an override, we could specify what the municipal additions would be, X many firefighters, X many police officers. But then there would just be a figure for the schools.
Correct.
Correct.
Does that send the message that we're being transparent about what the municipal's going to spend?
Yes.
And the schools are just giving, this is a block to the schools.
No, because I have to by law this.
I was going to say.
Right, but, but, but I.
Or some, it's your question, oh, the schools didn't delineate, so therefore I don't think they're being transparent. I'm voting no.
Yes, yes.
Is that your?
Yeah, that's a fair point.
It is, but it's an educational issue too.
This whole, yes, all of this is.
No pun, no pun intended. Yes.
Double entendre.
Voter education.
I notice you have at the bottom of this page, reference to no OPEB, no pensions, no.
Yeah.
Was that to say that becomes your thirty-one?
No, I just wanted to say, these are town budget items, town departments.
Right.
You know, you could identify each of these in a, in one of the departments under department head, but there are other things, other than the schools, that I think are worth mentioning.
Unlike the our CASA discussion, OPEB is a real and annual problem, so.
And these are things we did address in the last override, you know, sketched out thoughts on it.
Correct.
And worked in numbers into the total.
Would you not build that into somehow accommodated cost line?
You may, and I didn't want to do it, because I'm just presenting the town budget, the town department's budget, and I'm just, I'm just be, you know, you don't see benefits here, you don't see debt, you don't see capital. This is the town departments. But I wanted to make sure to remind you, there are other parts to an override, except for education, that are not on this page.
So you're not advocating.
Doesn't mean we have to do any of them, but we need to talk about it.
Okay, so let me play back what I think you said. These are the town line items. It doesn't preclude including or adding an OPEB or pensions or capital discussion. In fact, we should talk about it. And of course, the school's discussion gets lumped in on top of it.
Right.
Okay.
And the sustainability issue, I think, hung us up last year. We can't be as complex. Do we discard it? Do we include it in some simple way? I don't know.
Keep it simple.
Yeah, although, you know, basically, what you did here, when you sort of laid them out in order of priority, and you did, you know, what is the average cost of this thing, and then the cumulative, right? You know, if you go to the end of the list, I think it's a little over two hundred dollars, you know, on the average house, if you added everything in.
Yeah.
But what's not included in there is the sustainability factor.
Right.
We talked about, you know, I, I did the, the algebra, and it's, it sounded like maybe, maybe right, you know, off a little bit, sixty dollars a year per house, per year. You know, based on that, so.
Does that depend on the size of the list you prepared?
No, it just depends on just kind of, you know, based on.
That's, I, I agree, and we've had that discussion. I'd be willing to live with that number, and I think it's fair, but it is a little bit risky as opposed to conservative financially. It's half a million dollars a year for the, for one more year.
Right.
We can live with that. We've in the past said seven hundred thousand. Who knows? We, we have pretty good free cash.
But then we have our, we have our growth that.
We have growth, which you.
Yes, and that's, that's an important discussion.
Right, so, but the thing is, if we're going to go out and with a specific number, right, I think it's important not just to say, well, in the year one, it's this per house, because it's going to be for a, a, a longer period of time. And, and I think our mistake last time was trying to say that this is going to last for eight to ten years.
Yeah.
Which I don't, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we should. I think we say it lasts until it doesn't, but we give some type of a parameter, like, we're not going to come back.
Yeah, you got to give a minimum.
We're not going to come back, you know, a minimum of three years, let's say. But that, that sustainability number needs to be included in this, even if it's rough. And then, you know, and then the other thing too, that needs to be included somehow in our discussion, is what our estimate of growth is going to be. You know, I, I asked Bob to do, you know, just kind of what, how did we grow in the last ten years? Just, you know, you know, what did it look like? And, you know, we had, you know, for a while, obviously during, you know, period of the, you know, recession, we were doing two, three, four hundred a year. We had a couple of really good years, and then from, you know, eight until, eight until thirteen, we were really flat around five hundred thousand dollars a year. And then the last three years, we've exploded.
What's the tagger?
Well, I'm sorry?
Cumulative average growth rate. You can't go by dollars per year.
No, I'm just saying, but per, right, but, but each year it's grown.
Less than a percent.
And what we've, and what.
Less than a percent.
Right, but what we're not, what we're not factoring in, and I think what we need to factor in as we sort of lay out kind of, you know, what we want to prioritize, is that we have sixteen projects that have already been permitted, that are going to probably break ground in the next couple of years. That is going to basically, I mean, I, I don't know the number. That's why I asked, you know, can Victor do a, you know, back of the envelope kind of calculation about if we've exploded over the last couple of years, you know, by forty percent, you know, over the next five to seven years, as these projects come on, will that new growth mitigate, how will that new growth mitigate it?
Good question.
And do we feel comfortable then, kind of maybe going out a little longer, knowing that that new growth is really going to kick in? Now, obviously, there's no guarantees, you know, developer capacity, the market, the economy, all of that's going to factor in. But in two thousand three, if anybody ever thought about it, which I know they probably didn't, no one factored new growth.
Correct.
And, and, and in two thousand three, we didn't have sixteen projects permitted, which we do now. So I, I think we need some type of estimate on that before we sort of figure out where we're comfortable drawing that line. And, you know, the more growth, you know, the more growth that I know that we can count on, or that, not even count on, but that we could at least pray for, the more willing I'm to draw the line further down, because.
I have two problems with that though. One is, one of the defects we made in the last go-around was assuring people about future events, or making some, and we're not going to necessarily be around to blame or to respond if those things don't come about, and therefore we have no liability. So we're telling people a bit of a, what will happen in five years, and there's no way we can do that with any sense of certainty. Like the direction of it, I think that's all upside.
Without factoring in the growth story, this is an incomplete project.
I do think we're in an environment where the voters want to be heard on a regular basis. And, you know, the idea that, first of all, the idea that it'd be fourteen years before we go back is just insane. I mean, that is part of the problem today, frankly.
I agree.
And I think that, you know, the idea of longevity of whatever we, you know, decide to put in front of the voters is very secondary, because I think they want, they want to decide. And if they're deciding on something every year, I actually think that that's probably real. I think that's, you know, I don't think it's unrealistic to think that people will accept certain things in a detailed way, and then when the next thing comes up, they want to make another decision, and it's yes or it's no.
But, but going out three years versus eight or nine or fourteen, you know, I, you know, I'd rather do three, three-year asks than one nine-year ask, because I think people will feel that they have more inclusion.
Well, if you, the way I read this, I mean, so for example, if you took two-thirds of that list and had a billion dollars, it would, in order to be able to take this thing out another two years, you're going to need another million and a half in order to be able to do it.
That's why I mean.
Which means in order to get a million, you got to ask for two and a half, and then by the time you get done factoring in what the schools are going to need and ask for, guess what? You're going to be right back to eight or nine million, and everybody on, that responded said, you guys are crazy.
I, I don't expect the number to be eight or nine million or, but I, I think though, that you, you need to understand the longevity piece, so you feel comfortable where to draw the line.
Well, a forecast of a million dollars requires two and a half.
We're sort of between a rock and a hard place a little bit, because on the one hand, we need to be responsible in our forward thinking, as Barry was talking about. There is going to be an economic growth.
Certainly.
Component to, to sustaining this. And we can't hire five, seven police fire officers and then, firefighters, and then lay them off the next year, because, because we've run out of money. On the other hand, we, you know, the voters will look at us like we have three heads if we, we come back in two thousand and nineteen and say, we're looking for another override. So, so we sort of have to, I think, find the middle ground.
That is done in a number of cities and towns.
I know. You want to do this every year?
No, but I think it's a sign of the times, Barry. I think the fact that we haven't done it for fourteen years is why we're in such a laborous situation right now. And we have not kept our voters in, informed on the reality of the finances. And therefore, you know, it's very hard for them to make a decision after fourteen years of a gigantic number.
Just telling people, you know, one of the things that people told me was, fourteen years, really? I meant I can be here in fourteen years. I'm paying for insurance. And I'm not even going to be able to cash the benefit on it.
But they might be here for three.
Yeah.
The point is, it's beyond what they can comprehend. So whatever we do, I think we got to do it in a framework that's, that's in the foreseeable future, whether that's three years or what have you. The other part of this is the insurance discussion, although it made sense to us, made no sense to the voter public. It was so hard, just as a concept, to get across. To include it here again is.
Right, but you have to factor it in, if, if, otherwise you're going to tell them, I'm coming back to you next year.
We need to know about the upside growth in revenue, and to the extent you get new projects, we got to look at that as a delta, new growth. I get it.
I, I think the voters are, are capable of following this discussion and what, you know, what we're sort of struggling with here.
Bob, do you have a question?
Yeah, just so you can lay out what's out there and what's behind all these thinking. We have new growth assumptions that are going up fifty thousand a year by assumption.
By year, per year.
That's not, not happened in the past.
I mean, it's been high.
I don't remember if it's five fifty or six hundred next year, but it's going to go up fifty a year, and that's what we've built into our budget assumptions.
Already.
So, you know, I'm comfortable that it's very likely to be more than that.
Right.
But I'm, I'm not expecting million-dollar years successively. So there's some amount of, is it a hundred thousand? Is it three hundred thousand? I don't know. There's some amount in there that I do believe is growth above and beyond what we're estimating.
You had nine hundred, seven hundred, eight forty, and now you're budgeting five fifty.
If we think the gap is seven hundred thousand, okay, say it's five hundred thousand, because I know there's some cushion.
Because there's other things that'll come, come back into play.
And you don't, yeah.
Every year it's a different set.
The idea of being able to do some kind of forward forecasting based on.
Yeah.
You have to make some, and I realize, I realize clearly that they're assumptions not factually based.
Right.
But you've got the amount of permitting done. We have some idea of what that's going to create on the other side. That's going to create not only real estate tax revenues, it, it could create restaurant taxes, it can create excise taxes. There's a whole series of things that tie into that. So I do think that, I think it's, I think we might be surprised to find out that if we were hoping to do something at one level and make it last three years, we should back into that based on some reasonable growth rate, rather than plug the number into the override. Because I think we're going to scare, I think we're going to, the, the average voter is going to say, oh, you're just doing it again. You know, you're building too big a number, and I'm not going to vote for it, instead of being able to think it through and go, okay, yeah. On the town side, that's a pretty good deal. If I spend X, if I was spending a hundred and fifty dollars and I got four cops and three firefighters, and then I'm spending another two hundred and fifty dollars and I got, you know, a foreign language, you know, system going on in the middle schools and so forth. See, I think.
You can wrap your head around it.
I think people go, oh, yeah, okay, I get it. I, you know, I'm spending three hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollars a year, and this is what I get. And I do think that that's how this is, if we're going to be successful, I think that's the way it's got to be explained.
If, Bob, could I ask a question of Ms. Webb?
Yes.
I understand Thursday evening, you're having your budget hearing, followed by a presentation of what the superintendent called a reconstruction budget.
Yeah, restore, restructure, reconstruct.
Do we have any idea what the magnitude of that ask is going to be?
No, actually, we're, there's some things going on to get some information to some committee members, so that's happening, and then, no.
So you don't have a packet on that?
No, it'll be presented on Thursday.
Right.
The committee has not prioritized the list. The committee members in the committee will review, have, will have reviewed and will be reviewing it. But we haven't prioritized it, and I think it's important that we have a full discussion of it.
Sure.
And frankly, I, I, my, my point of view thinks that what we put forward as a school committee, for what we feel the schools need, whether it's for the three years, a year or three years, it's, it's, it's critical. We're at a very severe point right now. I believe that we need to get feedback from the selectmen about what that number, what you guys are going to approve. I'm sort of, I see you did some sort of math working backwards from the municipal side number, but that isn't, you know, we need to see what our number is, what, what our items are, what that number is.
Right.
And I'm hoping that that gets approved. And I think we need to prioritize it so that people can see, here's the ten, twelve, fifteen items, and this is the order in which. But from my perspective, if you're going to say, whatever that number is, you're not going to put that whole number on the, on the ballot. We need an opportunity to, to prioritize, to cut things off.
Right, so you're not intending on like, on that Thursday, to kind of have the discussion amongst the school committee members yourselves about, okay, well, I, I like, I want to do A, B, C, and someone wants to do B, G, F, or, so you're going to have that internal, like, in public?
I think we'll discuss them, but I, I don't, this is me personally, I have some discussions with the chair, but I don't believe that, I, I don't want to be tied down personally to, to a prioritized list. And then, and then that, that's a number, it's number X, but yet what gets approved is X minus one.
So essentially, we've, we've made your budget.
The, the number is eleven, it will come off the bottom. I, I want to know what X is. If it's X, or if it's X minus ten, then we'll decide, you know, what, what we won't do, what we are not going to restore or restructure, what services we're not going to provide.
I mean, there, there are two ways to look at this, and this ties into earlier discussion on itemizing things on the, the override. If we put it all in one number, yeah, we'll have to exercise some judgment on what goes into that number. But if there are separate questions for the school and town, I for one, speaking for myself, don't feel I should be making judgments on the number they want to put forward.
Was that it? I'm sorry.
If we itemize, I'm less likely, in fact, I'm not likely at all to want to restrict what the schools put on. If, in their own best interest, in their own best judgment, they feel that's the number they can sell.
We got to hold that discussion until we have our discussion done.
It's, it's kind of more for the thirtieth, but.
There aren't many organizations that get to make the same mistake, the same mistake twice. And we're, we're right where we were last year, and last year we had a concept of a well-constructed, risk-averse, a long-lasting override that had the best that all of us could come up with. And it wasn't well-received for all the reasons we already know. I'm unwilling to make the same set of assumptions and the same mistakes the second time.
Well, what we didn't have was the results of the survey. Not that the survey dictates what we should do, but it's a bellwether.
It sure is a window into what people are thinking.
Yeah, it's directional. Well, I mean, one thing we know is that it's not going to be seven and a half million, so that was, that's the, you know, the biggest pushback.
Among many of the things we have.
And, you know, the other thing is that we're not going to say it's going to last for eight years. So that's a, that's another thing that we, we know we can do. And I think we've done already, just, just having this discussion, ten times better job of sort of laying out what the needs are and, and what, what our priorities were. I don't think we did a super great job of that last time.
I think we did a good job of it last year. We've done a better job of it this year, but we're, I think the key element is that the.
You've got the comments.
You've got comments that allow you to, to judge where you want to be in that space. But additionally, I think the thought of including the sustainability just brings back, harkens back to one of the objections people had in six, two thousand and sixteen. And I don't, I don't, I don't have the energy to go explain to people what that is and get it shot down.
John, I mean, Mike, just, just to be clear, what my position is, if you care, I don't insist you put any sustainability formally in the number. We figure it out. That's what we're, that's what we're, our job is. But I will tell you, without that number, I would have to manage differently, obviously. I'd have to consider risk.
Well, the growth forecast will help us decide what the ask should be, in my opinion. If you've got that, you're right. I, I totally agree with that statement, that to plug in the sustainability number is like committing political suicide with this thing.
I agree, yeah.
I, I just, that's a personal opinion, but.
My only, my only discomfort is, I have absolutely no idea what health insurance. My only, my only discomfort is I have absolutely no idea what health insurance is gonna cost.
Correct.
We never do.
No, it is.
No, and you have to, and you, as we've been able to do, is we've figured it out.
Yeah.
And in some cases, that's what we have to do.
We will figure it out, but we can't plan because we can't know.
We can't budget for every potential risk, cause you can't afford it, so...
John, um, the number of members of, five members of FinCom, I think, are still here. And and I I was hoping that we could hear from them this evening before it got too late, um, on some of these things we've been discussing.
I'd rather the board get through these documents, and then we can open them for public discussion. We're on page, you know, five of a multi-page document.
I know.
So if we beat in five D...
Seventy-six pages here.
I understand. We beat up five D five.
Well, I I didn't know if the board had any desire to specifically go through departments, I mean...
Does anyone care to jump in?
What's what's being funded, quite honestly, is a little less important, that's what's not being funded for this discussion.
And I feel pretty educated from the form, the form meetings that we had.
Sure. Those meetings were excellent, and all the things they asked for, you had to say no to.
Right.
Essentially.
Almost all.
Almost all, not all, but, you know, if you've read this document, I mean, I I don't have any questions for you into the micro version of what you have laid out here for us for our reading. Um, I thought it was very self-explanatory, and I thought it was very clear.
And I'll be clear, the only reason we're able to add a couple clerics is because two and a half percent is so much better than one and a half percent as a budget, it's light years difference. And I I wouldn't have known that a year ago. Um, but we had to take our medicine a year ago, and we did, and I'll give everyone a lot of credit for that. That was the right thing.
If no one else has any objections, I have a number of comments I just wanted to run through. Five D seven on the table at the top of the page. Uh, I think you, uh, five D seven.
Yep.
But line called technology, the run rate in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen has all been sub-four hundred, so, um, the FY eighteen is strong, and the FY nineteen is like likely strong. You identified some one timers in eighteen, what, why would the run rate in nineteen not return to kind of a sub-four hundred, four hundred-ish run rate?
Um, because we could afford to leave about twenty out of the eighty thousand we had added as one time in the budget. Whether that's sustainable for a second or third year, I can't say.
So you put recurring expenses in eighteen that aren't one time, that'll show up in nineteen and twenty?
Um, I put eighty thousand in eighteen that were one time.
Okay.
I didn't remove eighty thousand, I removed sixty thousand and repurposed twenty thousand to buy equipment. So it's a little higher than it might have been.
But those equipment buys are are gonna recur, or different ones will occur in nineteen, and it's just...
I don't know, I mean, it it's a question of how often, what's your replacement cycle for your desktops?
I get it, I'm just looking at the run rate, it's it's a big tick up, and, uh, I don't know if it returns back to run rate at some point. That that's, I...
Also, an important factor, let me just jump down, if you wanna get into the details in the technology section. I I accept your answer, I just, no, licenses are gonna always go up three to five percent a year.
Always, okay.
And that's, that's a run rate now we can't get away from.
Well, the other thing is you have new software that precludes the need to hire more people. And those are gonna continue to surface, you've got to be able to budget for those, and re-license them as they come up. So, that's gonna be an ever-growing.
Yeah, there there's the two types of expenses, seven percent was the run rate this year of our licenses. That's a less discretionary item unless we get rid of the license.
Boy, software's got no cost of goods sold, it's a great business, right?
Well, you know, when I looked at that...
Absolutely is. They should give it away.
I looked at that same thing, and I made myself a note, um, and then I thought about it, and I said, what we've been doing, and we've been doing this for years, is we've been suppressing this budget. I mean, all all the years that I've been a selectman, we've suppressed the budget. Areas that we held down, for example, there, would be one of them. Probably weren't taking advantage of technological opportunities, um, because of cost, so...
My next is at the bottom of fi- of five D seven, in the words. Second sentence, you're gonna give a software upgrade to the specialist position? Are we upgrading a human being with new software?
Where are you? Oh, here we go.
And a software upgrade increase to the specialist position is...
Oh, okay, that's, um, the retired former town accountant, we don't let people leave. Um, we have a pretty significant series of upgrades from units that she is in charge of. So rather than pay the vendor, we actually pay her to do the software.
I see, you're paying her to do the software upgrade, okay, I didn't, that made no sense at all.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What happens, you're gonna write quickly.
Um, my next is on five D nine, the table in the middle.
I just have a quick one on five D eight, John, I I think it's a typo, um, maybe, and and this, I saw this a couple times, maybe I'm misreading it, but under FY eighteen actuals for December eleventh, as of, you know, to December eleven seventeen, like, for example, if you look at law, legal counsel, it was, um, FY seventeen actual was a hundred and ninety-three and change, a hundred and ninety-three thousand. To date, it's only ten thousand.
He's way behind in billing us, though.
That's July's bill.
Is just he's way behind in billing us.
We have since December got an August in.
That's not accurate.
Okay, so the, so the other question is, is two hundred enough?
I believe so. I I believe it is. If it isn't, we'll have to ask.
My next is in the middle of five D nine. There's something called dot certifications for HR.
Department of Transportation.
Are they driving around? What what is this?
Uh, it's Department of Transportation certification.
We're paying for, on behalf of people coming in.
Our our people who have Class A licenses need to be recertified.
I see, that makes sense.
And that goes through HR.
Yeah.
Okay. On the bottom of the, the bottom of the same page, you have, most of the raises you have in here are are two and a half or three percent. You have the technology director at one. Is there a reason for that?
Um, yeah, let me speak about that more broadly. First of all, there's union and non-union. Non, uh, union, I can't really say much about, we're collective bargaining. Non-union, we have, as you, as you know, a step program plus a COLA. Um, if you see a one percent, um, number, and everything had been budgeted properly and the personnel hadn't changed, that means that person's a top step, this person's a top step. So a number of our heads are a top step.
Already capped out.
So, so Mike, I guess my question is, if that's the case, is that when we worry about losing them?
No.
Talking about sustaining?
No, and I'll get killed tomorrow, so, no. No, I mean, everyone knows what the deal is. It's the age-old problem of, do you wanna give out money in steps or COLA, it's a discussion I have every couple of years with unions. It's an unsolvable equation.
My next is on five D ten, at the risk of making this more complex, you've broken it up into parts and licensing. I get the licensing parts, but apart, but within the parts and equipment part, you have contracts and services and parts. Is it, is it too small to break up, or would you ever, because licenses are gonna follow their own track, that software is a service. Parts are kind of episodic, and contracts and services, you would wanna track separately.
You know, one of the comments I got back last year, um, from from a couple town meeting members is, please reduce your detail, which I'm glad to do. So this is not a good example of it, the technology budget, there's still a lot of lines there, I think it maybe is too much. We have divided this up another way, absolutely, but I wanted to mostly isolate software versus other things.
All right, software plus, okay, then it's fine, I get your point, I didn't know if you've thought through it. Don't know what that is. Don't know what that is. Oh, my next is on five D sixteen. So at the bottom of the page, the S I, S H I, gotta be careful how you say that. Numbers here differ from those that Jean presented, uh, four weeks ago. She described the current S H I as eight forty-one and eighty point seventy percent. These are somewhat larger, what's changed?
Uh, Gould Street has moved categories at fifty-five units.
But I thought those were already baked into her presentation.
Well, they were when she gave it, that's changed. Gould Street has been approved by the state, it's now not a projected number as they counted, but not yet.
So we count them even though, um, they're not built yet?
Yeah, and, you know, there's obviously a risk they won't be built.
Right, see, we count them, but they're not the S H I.
The the state counts them too, just to be clear, okay, that's not our choice.
So that's why it's important not to just try to hit the numbers.
To the left-hand side of this margin is the official state tally today. To the right is things we know about that haven't seen their way into the state yet. But Barry's point, we are not certain what's on the left will be built, until it's built.
Um, my next is on five D twenty-one. The reference at the bottom of the page, the sentence that says the part-time court, oh, you passed it, up, right there. Reference to FY seventeen, is that a typo?
Yeah. I have a hard time knowing what year I'm in, so...
I I do it all the time, I keep putting down, you know, two thousand and sixteen on the...
I'd just like to back up quickly, very quickly to five D seventeen, and the permitting activity on that, um, the middle chart, and 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 when we discussed increasing the depot parking fees, uh, a few months ago, um, I had expressed a desire to look at fees fees across the board, so that we we weren't just targeting a sub-population of residents, um, to have their fees increases increased, but but to to revisit all the 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 fees. Is there any interest, is there interest on the board to look at some of these other fees in addition to just the commuters?
We did this, I think, the year before you joined, we talked about, for example, the fire ambulance fee, and I think we went through the permitting fees too.
Uh, and just before that, we we had an exhaustive list of every fee the town charged. It was enormous volume of work.
So this has been touched, um, maybe not since you've been here, but it's within...
In the last handful of years, it's been worked pretty hard.
And and it's, it's absolutely fine to do it on a regular basis.
Right.
I don't think it's as helpful for us to do as comprehensive a survey of all our twenty-five years every so many years.
So these have been raised in in recent years?
Some of them substantially, or they've been out of kilter.
Thank you.
I mean, I've kind of listened to both points that they're taking, I think they were reviewed a few years ago. But I remember specifically Jean saying that the permit fees are well below where they could be. I know the ambulance fees even when we last reviewed them, were designed to be a bit below average, right, in whatever year that was, two or three years ago. They certainly are a little bit out of date, and there probably is some revenue potential from that. And I would strongly urge that we do look at all of these, not, you know, we be, look at one very carefully. I don't think we'd look at everything, the small ones, but the larger ones, I think, really have a lot of revenue impact for fiscal reasons.
I I can respond to the ambulance fee, we haven't looked at it in two years. We're very fortunate to still be collecting as much as we are, because there's a lot of pressure from the health insurance end market to reduce the fees we collect. And we dodged a couple bullets, we almost lost three to four hundred thousand dollars of revenue, uh, on Beacon Hill last fall. So that one I know is okay, uh, the others, I I certainly take your point.
Would Jean be able to return with at least the survey from two years ago and where we stand today?
Yeah.
And just, the two-year-old data's close.
I mean, she referenced that there was, that we were below...
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that, maybe, not in the next three months, but...
Just just to be clear, though, when she said below, if we're getting four hundred thousand dollars of fees, a lot means forty or eighty thousand, just so you know, so you're not surprised.
Forty or eighty thousand.
That's a lot, ten or twenty percent. But it's not a lot of revenue.
Right, so it's...
It's a big percentage, but it's not a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, okay, you know, that doesn't move the needle, nerd, so you feel good about it, but great, you're ten K.
Yeah, but, well, it's...
But it's worth discussing.
It's worth discussing.
Right, maybe add up two or three of those in different areas.
We look, yeah, I I get it, okay.
Furthermore, I think if we, and we need to to have the appearance of some fairness, and and we've asked the commuters, we've really hyped up their their depot fees recently. So 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 I think if we're asking them to vote for an override on top of their depot fee increase...
We wanna raise their other fees?
No, we wanna re-raise these fees.
So the depot fee is a good, a different animal, right?
If 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 if, um...
Your characterization, I think, is, be careful with that, we haven't touched the depot fee since the depot was created. So that one was probably...
Furthermore, it continues to be a fraction of what the MBTA charges a hundred yards away.
But 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 you can't compare it to the MBTA fee, because we can only charge a fee that we can justify.
We're still under it by at least a factor of fifty percent.
We're way under what it costs us.
We could easily justify two hundred...
We charged a hundred and, it was two hundred and seven dollars.
Not to revisit this again, but actually to tie it back to the budget in the in the actual department that we're looking at, one of the things that you actually did put in the budget, as opposed to one of the things you didn't, was what Jean had requested was that second point, that is. My hope is, one of the deliverables in FY nineteen would be some sort of a parking study that looks at the downtown parking, obviously for the economic development we're doing, but also looking at the depot. Is that something that you envision, because I think that that's, you know, it gets into the whole thing of fees?
Jean is at your next meeting, and this is all good discussion for her, she's aware of it. You should, uh, watch the tape from CPDC last night and see John Weston's thoughts on that. They're quite radical and very interesting, so...
Okay.
He said in five or ten years, you're not gonna be driving the same cars you are now, we're wasting our time doing the same old-fashioned traffic system, so...
In the meantime, while we are driving the same cars to the same depot...
Well, he, let's let's rephrase it and say, you don't wanna go out and spend another hundred-plus thousand on a consultant study for some, for a market that's so volatile.
Okay.
So it's will, it's a good topic to discuss. Uh, and just to remind the board, um, part of the capital plan is four hundred thousand, um, to do some kind of assessments above and below ground for improvements needed in the downtown related to economic development. So parking could be already in the budget, it's a future discussion.
But we're gonna, but but what, potentially by adding that position, we actually have the capacity, the human being, that could actually undertake that work, whereas opposed, we we couldn't.
But just to be clear, we really turned Ann's position as a clerk into that position, so we're upgrading by eight to ten thousand dollars. So there's still a lot of work that has to be the same, but we're allowing Julie and Jean to spend less time on the counter, and a planning person could spend more time. So, yes, there will be more planning resources, but it's marginal, it's not like a whole new person's company.
So that was Ann's spot, which means you gotta hole someplace else.
Right, well, rearranged. Two are doing three's job.
In elder affairs.
My last change was, uh, five D twenty-eight, um, the table in the middle. I had to do it with the police staff, and so, um, Bill Brown referenced a nineteen sixty-seven survey that had, I think it was nineteen thousand population, forty-one sworn officers. It's just another data point, but it's one that we cited all the time, so, the others are great.
It actually tells the tells the more drastic story.
Well, it went up and declined, it went in the wrong direction, which ties to the graph we saw from Chief Segal.
I tell you, in all this data that that I saw, that they showed me, I I tell you quite honestly, I was much more disturbed by two thousand and ten to two thousand and seventeen than long ago. Cause that's, you know, I've been here, we've all generally been here. Are you kidding me? In seven years, we've fallen behind by that many more positions?
Yeah.
Because we've grown commercially and...
And the threat base has changed dramatically, too, it's not just the...
Yeah, unfortunately.
And and the work, the type of work they do, it takes a lot longer to do what they used to do.
It's more complicated. I think that's why the clerk position will at least marginally help both the police and fire.
Bob, I, I, I hope you can fix the this next one magically, because if, under the, uh, Human Elder Services Division, page, page five D eighteen, um, the elder human services wages are going up only by one point nine percent. And I understand that we, you're working with a really restricted budget, but, um, given that it's a a growing population in our community, I I wonder if if we're underserving that population?
Absolutely, yes, we are. But just to be clear, the reason for the change is primarily because we are getting three thousand dollars more of state grant. So there's a more of an offset. If you look, pretty much everyone's getting a raise.
Right.
Um, we asked for some money at November Town Meeting to give the administrator so many hours. Um, we are, we are able financially, because of vacancies, to work her more through June and then have to cut her back. And that's been the discussion all along, so it's not quite three percent, not exactly the same.
So is that the, is that the plan? That her hours will be cut in June, on June thirtieth?
The plan was, they were, I I'm not gonna remember exact numbers, so I'll make them up. She was working twenty hours, she wanted to work twenty-eight, we got her to twenty-four in the budget, but let her work to twenty-eight because of vacancies. And that would mean she'd have to come back to twenty-four. I know those not, aren't the right numbers, that's the idea.
When we should be moving her to forty?
No question. Yeah, no question.
Any of the comments, those are all mine.
Honored.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Good luck.
I have a question about the these, that that municipal side, um, do you guys do any, like, any, like, production of any of the fees, or, sort of, yeah? On the school side, we do, um, a lot of the athletic fees and the the kin book fees, the extended day fee. So, um, I just wanted to impact as we see the housing, of looking at that housing profile and getting onto that one.
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
You've seen an increase in about three percentage points at least since, sort of, my earlier service on the, so, uh, the school committee. my earlier service on the school committee in three years' launch, but close to ten percent. And that's what we use to then, to allow and provide production or elimination of fees. I didn't know if on the municipal side, there's anything like that other than the, I mean, the senior tax relief.
Senior tax relief is about all there is.
Yeah, and that piggybacks on the state circuit breaker. So that's how we get the data on income.
That's a really interesting question. Offhand, not at all like you do for athletic fees, since you have a program to allow, you know, forgiveness. Most of our fees, if you think of it, are designed at the commercial sector. Most of Jean's fees are commercial sector. Our Human Elder Services Division, you know, has a suggested donation for some things, so I guess in a way that gets around it. And then we just don't charge fees for things, you know, should we charge fees for the nurse advocate to go out and visit someone? I suppose we could, but we don't charge anything. So maybe we don't have many free or reduced services because we don't charge originally.
Is there free?
And the person might qualify. That's an interesting question. I never thought of it that way. I'll give it more thought.
Have you done the work to compare the, without identifying students, at least identify the addresses to prove that it's from, say, you're suggesting it's from the increase in...
I, I don't know. I, you know, how is Brennan's income demographic changed in the last year?
Not the income. Is it tied to the, I thought you were going down the path of describing it as high-density housing related?
Um, I, I guess I don't, I don't know where they live. What I know is, a higher percentage of our students qualify to some level of paid first lunch. Where they live in the community, I don't really know. I guess I was, you know, thinking, is the lower-income housing truly doing what it's supposed to do? And, you know, and we, so, you know, obviously that impacts, it impacts our revenue that we, our offsets, it impacts the revolving fund offsets that we can then use as we go forward. I, I have one other fee question. So I, I understand what Mark's, you know, what you're saying, looking at the fees, but do you also look at, like, what's the service, ensuring that if you're going to increase the fee, right, that you're still providing the services, so...
We did that this year, for example, with plumbing. All the plumbing fees and the water and sewer fees were all reviewed. The town engineer compared it against neighboring peers. We're kind of at the median level. I guess, you know, it all depends on who you compare yourself to, whether it's a Weston, a Winchester, or, you know, a Wakefield, like, to keep up each other.
And I also mean, like, in the building, in the departments where you've got staff, you have staff to support the execution of the fees and supporting the economic growth of the community. And so, right, we want it to be easy for the economic growth to occur and the businesses to thrive. And so, yes, okay, increase the fee, I get it, there's a capital there, but just make sure that we're still providing the service to allow the growth to happen in the...
And I will, along those lines, I'll preview something Jean will talk about in two weeks. I'm not sure to what extent, but, and I was less familiar until I did the research. Town meeting can approve and must approve what building permit fees can go into the revolving fund, and they've done that in the past. We, out of those sixteen projects, that's a discussion you should have, and that's something that could be put in front of April Town Meeting, is, are there any projects on this list that should have fees directed into that fund for whatever purpose you discuss? And we'll make sure you get a list and see all the projects in the past.
Are you suggesting you could do it by project?
Yes, you can.
And it would be general fund or revolving fund?
Yes, and that's a vote of Town Meeting.
But that's one-time money.
Yes, absolutely.
But those are all, those fees are all really one-time money.
Uh, yeah.
You'll get taxes on them if they're building, following.
Right, but the fees are...
The fees themselves are one-time.
And we've used that to support other things, like our economic development director.
You know, that's a discussion, there's, there's no right answer. There's pluses and minuses to each approach. We'll show you what we've done in the past, and, you know, you guys can decide.
Well, presumably, those economic, those projects are going to spin off the need for more staff time, whether they be actual, you know, permit stuff or...
Yeah, and we're using, I think, a hundred eighty thousand, the maximum's two hundred thousand. We're using one eighty as an offset. It's our only offset, unlike the schools. So we're not, I'm not as familiar with this. Most of that is the economic development positions, but not all. We're using fifty thousand, I think, to offset building inspector hours, to Elaine's point, to make sure we have that service.
Right, right.
So should the projects in the queue further contribute to that revenue to stretch us out for two or three years? It's a discussion you should just have.
We should earmark it for what it's useful.
Before we leave this topic, Bob, on a somewhat related note, what are your thoughts about economic development directors following the...
I'd suggest we talk to Jean next, next meeting, quite honestly. There's a meeting on Thursday where three of us are going to have a discussion.
Okay. So the job description may have changed?
It hasn't yet, but that's...
It's not posted?
No. Jean and Jesse and I are meeting on Thursday to decide what Jesse wants to do or can do, and so on and so forth. And today's Andrew's birthday, in case anyone remembers.
Happy birthday.
So, so what are our next, I mean, I, I feel like we've just sort of scratched the surface. What, I mean, we're coming back on the twenty-third and we're going to vote on something on the thirtieth. What's our path forward? I don't...
I'm meeting on Tuesday with the superintendent and our seconds, as it were, our finance people. We're having a duel, and then...
A duel?
Yeah, seconds.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Take the knife.
But you're going friendly, though.
Don't take the knife.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And then I'm anticipating, and what usually has happened is a chair, vice-chair meeting of your board, the trustees, if they wish, and the school committee. I mean, you know, I don't know if John's discussed that with the school committee yet, but he and I have had a brief discussion. I know he's away. That seems like a reasonable thing to do before the thirtieth.
Right.
I don't really know, and I have not had a full discussion with what your intentions are on the thirtieth, or what FinCom's wishes are on the thirtieth, since technically they're meeting. So, you know, I guess that's part of the reason John and I want to sit down next week.
I mean, my understanding is that we'll have analyzed everything and we're going to be prepared to make a decision.
Okay.
We'll make a recommendation, but the actual language won't be formally brought down till we close the warrant, which is a...
Right, in mid or late February.
But at least that'll give folks a notion of...
It'll be a memorandum of understanding.
Where we're headed.
Right.
What's our closing date on the warrants?
I don't remember, but I'll say middle of February. It's probably third week of February, so...
In a month.
So, you know, absolutely, ask more questions, ask for more information in order to help you make that decision, based on how I've just thrown a couple numbers at you. And the finance committee will get a budget that this is the framework for. You know, Barry, at the last selectmen's meeting in December, you wondered if we could put together some of the background. This was a huge amount of work to do in that period of time.
Well, actually, this is a...
And this will serve as the basis for what FinCom gets. And I think from all corners, the meetings you had in December, the meetings were the only different part of the process. You heard more, and you didn't see the numbers first. So what you heard stuck maybe a little bit better.
And the presentations that they actually gave, which are now on the, those were incredibly helpful in understanding what they did.
I was slightly disappointed. There was a piece in the news recently, I forget where it came from, but there was an inference that somehow the December work was less than, less than clear. And I just want to assure the public that I don't think any board, and certainly no board that I've been part of, has attempted to do more as early and as thoroughly as we've done. And part of that, it's in response to, again, the criticisms that have come back through the, or selectmen's survey, to try to be thorough, detailed. Yeah, I know it's twelve hours of video. It's not the most, it's not the most entertaining crime story, but it's easy watching. It's substance and material that you're all familiar with. And I'm comfortable we've done about as thorough a job as we can in a format that anyone can watch at any time. We'll see where it goes.
I know, I understand it better. So if anybody watched it, then, so they did.
Yes, Mark.
Oh, I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead. Can you speak up? We're having a...
Yeah, so, sorry, I will stand up. Speaking, Mark Doxter, Precing Fund, Beaver Road, et cetera. So a couple of questions first. One, Dan, I think you were involved with the RMLD payment discussion.
Yeah.
Could you give an update on that?
They are sure slow-rolling that. We're not meeting again till February.
Do you know why?
It's been the Dickens to get those guys together.
So I think that, the Town Meeting last time, the discussion was to really kind of change the whole structure of things potentially, but meaning potentially consider selling RMLD.
No, that was not the motion.
Well, I think that was its intent, and we have to give Mr. McFadden to come forward and talk about it.
Mark, that's not what was voted...
The reasoning behind it specifically was to say that the payment is not fair, reasonable, and it should be adjusted. And my understanding was that the board, RMLD Board, came forward and said that they would enter into discussions to address that very topic. And if it's not happening, then maybe that's something we need to talk about.
Well, that's, that's separate issue that's not happening.
I think Mark's pointing out there may be somewhat lack of, certainly lack of progress, maybe a lack of urgency.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that that was Town Meeting's will. I think Town Meeting's will was a separate matter, affecting fiscal nineteen.
Do you have an opinion, Dan, how we would light the fires a bit? Is there, I mean, we could...
Sick McFadden on him again at work last time.
That's entirely possible. I'm sure he is. Let me see if he's texted.
Yeah, let me see.
He'll be getting a call in. Phil will be being texted as we speak.
He'll be here.
Second of all, I think that, back to the Arcasa issue, I think that's a really big deal, especially given how we may, we may look at this list and decide where to make the cut, assesses of, discussions of sustainability or not. That is a fiscal twenty issue in some way, shape, or form. Put it in zero, almost says, we're going to have to cut something in order to prioritize, if it's a priority. And I think in the spirit of transparency, if you fully understand that, maybe it goes here, or maybe there's a other way to think of it. I just think we shouldn't kind of say, about the table till next year.
But in fact, you could do it with Town Meeting willing. You could fund it in year two with free cash and potentially, it's not such a large number. You could do it on a continuing basis until you just...
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a mechanism to fund it. My concern is that this is a list of, a prioritized list.
I get it.
And we kind of fall off the prioritized list.
Well, just to be clear, I stated that this list did have some omissions. It was not a final list.
Yeah, I think I'm, and I don't know how to get it on, but I raise your point, but it's just...
You want it as a placeholder.
Yeah, I think you can't lay it upon...
Yeah.
Right, no, I agree.
My comments, the sustainability discussion, the growth assumptions, I think, Bob, you were right. I think you, you work based on, there's nothing in the override for sustainability, but we know that we have all sorts of growth. There's a little bit in there based on the assumptions for growth, but you can't overcomplicate. That's a mistake we've made. It's a mistake not to make again. I think that knowing that there's a lot more there, excuse me, there's an opportunity that that's going to end up being somewhat the sustainability issues. You know, I'm not...
Yeah.
In terms of the discussion about needs and categories, public safety versus police and specifics, I think we've also learned that things change every year, and sometimes a position doesn't fit fill, where things change, we need a different thing. Being overly specific creates a tough box to work out. My thought is that the kind of the public safety notion, the line item notion, probably makes very good sense rather than being overly specific about it. And last comment, the notion of longevity. I think in three years it's reasonable. I would not know what to do if we tried for every year. I just can't imagine the community would...
Retire.
Plus, it's very costly, right?
Yeah.
You know, in three years-ish...
You'd be paralyzed.
On the school committee question, I think that once the picture comes from the school committee and from superintendent, on what the needs are that they're expressing, that's a great point for discussion in terms of thinking about, okay, how does, how does all this fit? What kind of numbers might make sense? We do have a financial forum coming up, and it should involve also leverage on fees. We'll certainly invite the Light Board to join us as well. I think they're always, they're always, right?
I don't think the Light Board has ever attended any...
I think they're invited, though.
Good lord.
They don't want to see, they don't want to see Dan.
Well, we'll definitely invite Carl and others, too. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from the board before we...
So John?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The hour, the hour draws nigh.
Yeah, just to follow up on Barry's point about how to move forward and to take off of what Mark said, I think it'll be interesting to see what the school committee come, has to say later this week.
We'll be watching.
We can take that into account, and then hopefully at our, at our next meeting, have a discussion, an open discussion for the public to see and, and sort of try to figure out where we may come out on a operational override vote on the thirtieth.
I think we're done on this topic, so the only other topics...
There are, I think there might have been some other comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
My big concern, Peter Lottick or Beaver Road, I think as an individual...
What is it with Beaver Road? Everyone is like...
Yeah.
Oh, you just noticed that?
My, my big concern is the sustainability of the numbers that were put forth there. If you put all the numbers out and spelled out as you have, I think that's a great chart, but I'm wondering whether you could do it as more of a funding a police officer for three years, which would be a greater number, but at least the, the ads that we're doing here would be sustainable. Right now, you've got the rest of the budget's sustainability effort toward it, but if you just put in that number, it's basically going to be gone the next year because of sustainability.
You heard the town manager respond to that. They'll find a way to manage through it.
I want to make sure Peter understands what this list is. I believe all these lines are very sustainable for three to five years easily. We are not going to pay an entry-level police officer eighty thousand in the first days in the door.
Okay.
So that is meant to be a beginning-of-career average figure. And secondly, the expenses are something we can't find twenty or twenty-five thousand for one-time expenses when they join as uniforms. That would be freed up in the second or third year. It's not a lot of money, but it's fifteen or twenty thousand. So it's disingenuous to me to not ask for it upfront. So these numbers, if you will, are pretty thorough and not skinny in terms of these are sustainable. It's the rest of the stuff that's the challenge, but...
All right, that was, that was a major issue, again, is the sustainability issue, and it's a tough thing to deal with.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Barry?
So, so, Bob, I, I'm hearing two different things, and it's late and I'm tired. So...
Pick which one you like.
What you're, what you're saying in there, in answer to Peter's question, was that, you know, wherever we draw the line, we can assure people that that impact on their house or that thing, that this is a three-year commitment, not commitment, a three-year...
Sure is a strong word. What I was saying was that these specific line items are not priced in and unaffordable in the second year, or third year, or the fourth year.
So what you're saying necessarily, then, is that we don't have to factor in the X amount of dollars per house...
Correct.
You know, on that, on that last...
No, I would. I would ask for eighty thousand for the first police officer, and I would put eighty thousand in the budget. We will spend a little less than eighty. We can't know the educational qualifications.
Right. No, but for, for what John Halsey's point is, is that people want to know what this thing is going to, this, this service is going to cost me and what is going to be on my house. So I, I just want to understand, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll stop if I'm just being dumb, but, so what you're saying here is, is that you feel comfortable that this is, that we, I can't read it from here, but, you know, that that's a, you know...
So at line ten, if you had a hundred and twenty-seven dollars a year at line ten, that you're assured of doing that through at least three years? That suffice? Plus, plus two and a half?
Okay, and that's, okay, and that's, that, then I feel better about it.
George?
Yeah, George Catchen, Precinct Dave.
You live on Beaver Road?
No.
Precinct Dave, so. So I agree with everything that Mark said, and I think, I would like to convey that in the next days and weeks, kiss, keep it simple, stupid, because I think, you know, look at me, you know, remember twenty, you've heard the story, twenty-eight years, I voted yes in twenty sixteen. I had no idea what the numbers were. I believe in education. I believe in public safety. What's going to be on this issue then? So the thing is, and we have low turnout, okay? So the thing is, how are you going to get everyone out? And I think, you know, the, the truth is, we all recognize costs go up. Okay, there are the mandate and the health insurance, but there's things like technology, the software licenses. At our home, we all run into that. So somehow to relate with the people that all our costs are going up, we recognize that. And they go up far more than two and a half percent per year. Okay, recognize that. And then point out, what is the pain that we're suffering? Yeah, we're lucky. We haven't had, you know, a knock-on wood, a major catastrophe. So, you know, but we do need more. Look at the numbers in terms of twenty years ago. So we need more in public safety, and I'm not talking education right now, people are on it. Same concept, though. So it's logical, things have gone up, we aren't paying for it, we are suffering, we're hurting. And so therefore we got to, we've got to vote for it. And I would keep it simple also, as you say, public safety, you know, like technology, whatever, very basic things without getting into the